We can proceed. I'm gonna call to our order the regular meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Our attorney, Ms. Trolle, is going to give the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance which will be given by Ms. Stevens.
May we bow our heads. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Help us to use it wisely and well. We are grateful for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. And we note, our Father, that yesterday was the 219th anniversary of the conclusion of the Constitutional Convention that gave us the Constitution and our constitutional democracy that we have enjoyed since then. We are grateful for our independence. And we hope in the prayer with your continued guidance, we can be a model to the rest of your creation as to how people can govern themselves openly and freely. We note with sadness, our Father, the passing of Joel Jackson, a longtime employee of the county in EMS field. We hope that you will be with his family and his friends and assist them in the mourning of his passing and give them the comfort that only you can give. We look forward, our Father, to the beginning of autumn at the end of this year and the beauty that that season brings, and we thank you for it. And we ask these things, our Father, that our people may enjoy their independence and their freedom and that they be willing disciples of you. For all of these things, we ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is introduction of new employees. David Smithman, introduction of new employees.
I'll be right with you. I'll turn it over to Captain Estes, I think I saw him. Introduce your new employee, Mr. Otero.
Is he here?
I can't help you there.
I don't think he's here. He's with our jail.
He came to join us. He had military experience and he has come to join us to work in our jail. He's here with us today.
Hi, James. Would you pass on this, this kind of thing to work?
I would. Thank you, sir.
Tell him from the board that we're all.
If he hadn't figured out the combination, how to get out of there.
And Mr. Payne has two new employees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to introduce my two new employees this morning. First, Ben Lucas. Ben is a local guy, UNC Pembroke graduate. His wife Cantina works in the HR department with the county. Looking forward to having Ben with us. Ben's played in our Parks Recreation Program, so he has a very good perspective of how things go.
He sees from both sides, right?
Yes, sir. That's true. He's a very accomplished basketball player. He played at UNC Pembroke, CCC. And he also got an invitation to try out with Bobcats, with Charlotte Bobcats when they were born. So he knows the game very well. delighted to have him with us. Bill Shuey, married, his wife Shannon, is a teacher at Deep River School. Bill comes to us by way of Edinburgh University in Pennsylvania. Two and a half years ago, two and a half years ago, Bill did an internship with us, an unpaid internship with us. And so I told him that, his wife already had a job with Deep River School. And I told him, I said, "Well, you know, I can give you an internship, but I can't pay you. I don't have any money to pay you." And he said, "That's fine, I don't expect it." But he did an outstanding job for us. And I told him that the one thing I wanted him to be able to do is when he completed the internship and when he went for an interview, that he would be comfortable and well-versed in Parks Recreation. He went and interviewed with Chatham County and was hired the same day he interviewed. So we got him back from Chatham County. Bill's a great young man, and I'm looking forward to great things from both of them.
One personal note, Bill and Shannon have been active, have been very active volunteers in the community outside of their work of professional and church life. So they've worked with J.C.'s very hard over the years. It's good to see him with the county.
Thank you.
What positions do they fill? What's their title?
We, Ben technically is an athletic supervisor. And Bill technically is a recreation supervisor. But we kind of reorganized a little bit. Rather than to have two athletic supervisors, we have all three of those positions now with some athletics and some of them have recreation experience. Because when we filled the recreation supervisor position, that included pools. And Jason Simpson, who's already on our staff and came from Ashboro, had pools experience. And so we kind of divvied things up so that we'd have some expertise in different areas and kind of changed it up.
I'm sure they, hopefully, realize you're with the finest county in the state now. And behalf of the board, let me personally give these two pins.
David, do you have?
That's all.
That's it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Employee of the Month Selection Committee has selected Mrs. Vivian Taylor with Lee County Human Resources as the Employee of the Month for September 2006. Mrs. Taylor has worked for Lee County for 34 years and is currently employed as a human resources technician. Mrs. Taylor has consistently displayed superior customer service. She receives an abundance of telephone calls and in-person visits on a daily basis with questions on benefits. Many times, these employees are frustrated and confused, but when they leave her office, their disposition has changed for the better. When employees speak of Mrs. Taylor, they often use such words as courteous, helpful, and professional. During the absence, the recent absence of Human Resources Director, Mrs. Taylor worked diligently to keep the department going and running smoothly. She coordinated the open enrollment and worked with all employees to make sure their benefit deductions were accurate. Over the last few months, Mrs. Taylor has stepped up to the plate to help the new Human Resources Director accomplish the many tasks at hand. Additionally, she makes herself available to the Human Resources Director and eagerly assists her with any questions that she may have. Mrs. Taylor's initiative is contagious and the dedication she brings to everyone she does is 100 percent. The committee felt that based on the recommendation and Mrs. Taylor's professionalism, she should be awarded Employee of the Month. Therefore, with great pleasure, the committee respectfully asks that you join us in awarding Mrs. Taylor Employee of the Month for September 2006. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone. I know everyone of you personally, I feel. And if anything I can do to help you, I'll be glad to. But my motto is to do unto others as you'd have them do unto you. Thank you.
Vivian, would you drop me off here for just a second? The Star Award, if you'd pay us down and then from the Papa John's and Coke hole to bottom, but this is what she really gonna like, which is a K.O.
It's like fair night.
Anyone have any additional agenda items? Let's start on my left, Ms. Pascal?
Yes. No.
Very brief. I'd like to, John Payne, if you can stick around, like a touch base on Quanis Park. And also, David, I actually can probably deal with this Commissioner comments, but I want to talk about the conditions of some of our vans, services vans, you may be aware of. Anyway, we'll talk about that in Commissioner's comments, but Quanis Park would be an added agenda item.
You wanted to, so that John can get back to work, do you want to put that under new business?
Yes, it'll be very brief.
Okay. Is that it, Chad?
Yes, sir.
Robert?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lamont.
Couple of things here, Mr. Chairman. I just noticed a change that needs to be corrected on page 37. I've already addressed it to Ms. Lee, reference, the address for the annual support agreement and license agreement should be Mr. David Smithman instead of Mr. Cal.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Also, I want to pull item B on page 129. That will be the one I spoke with you about until next month. And hopefully, we'll have someone from the postal service to fill that position. Also, I'd like to add one thing to new business will be to discuss a longevity issue.
Okay, we'll put that first on the agenda and on the new business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Yours on, Mr. Smithman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Trolle? Any motion that the agenda be approved as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. Consent agenda. Any motion that consent agenda be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Adams to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Adams if he would read the proclamation for J. Fletcher Ralser Day, which is on our pages 22 to 24.
Okay. Lee County Board of Commissioners proclamation, J. Fletcher Ralser Day in Lee County, September 22, 2006. Whereas John Fletcher Ralser was born and raised in Lee County and served on numerous boards and clubs and received numerous awards throughout the years. And whereas John Fletcher Ralser was instrumental in starting the breadbasket and worked diligently for this nonprofit organization dedicated to feeding the needy. And whereas the citizens of Lee County lost a truly valuable public servant and friend when Mr. Ralser passed away, now therefore, we, the Lee County Board of Commissioners, do proclaim September 22, 2006, as J. Fletcher Ralser Day in Lee County to honor Mr. Ralser in memory of his years of service. Adopted this 18th day of September 2006, Herb Hinks, Chairman of Lee County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much. I hope that gets good publicity throughout the, throughout the county. Fletcher was a fine, proud person. Any public comments? Public comments? Old business, update on the 2007 revaluation project, Tim Kane, Lisa Faulkner.
Mr. James, if you would allow, we'd like to switch the order of those two items to allow for Mr. Kane's or I?
Update on 2000, request is granted with no objections. Update on 2002, CDBG project, Mr. Brutwell and Ms. Kennedy.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
We are working diligently to try to close out a very difficult and long-lasting project as I'm sure everyone is aware. We believe we are getting close. We do have still a issue with one client that we're attempting to identify with DCA and we're in ongoing communication with them, but we believe we are getting close to a resolution on that, we hope.
I've heard that so many times, but.
I understand.
And now, as you know and Karen knows, I'm starting to get home.
That's correct.
It's time to reopen closure to this, whatever it takes.
We have the response letter in DCA's hands. We talked to them on Friday on one issue and we now believe that we are ready for DCA to make a decision on how that should close out. And the monitoring letter is being prepared as we speak. Karen can address all the issues that are involved in that.
Okay, in our first meeting in October, I think that whatever communications you've had with DCA and let's bring this to a closure.
Well, hopefully, we'll have, we'll give you a full report on their response because now it is, it is essentially up to them how they should respond to this issue.
Understood.
Ms. Kennedy.
Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. You have copies of two of the letters in your packages. One of those is still in constant communication with you and with the Division of Community Assistance. As far as we being staff are concerned, we have addressed everything that was in her original complaint and much more. And DCA did speak with Bob and I on Friday and we told them our feelings about where we thought it was and that they needed to make some decisions so we could become to closure. The other package that you have later, the only holdup with that lady is the contractor disappeared last week and we're trying to find him. And he had ordered two parts. And I know they're ordered, so if I can find out where he ordered them, I can go get them and get them there. But he has vanished for a week on us. But that lady has been very pleasant to work with. We just need to finish her work. So that one's going on. The monitoring letter is the entire closeout response to the state. I have prepared that as far as the technical pieces. I'm working on the language that Mr. Hinks and I agreed that might be beneficial to put in the letter that points out our concerns about the way the entire project was handled. And I'm trying to work on that and I'm sure that Ms. Lee will help me clean that up a little bit so that it won't sound so bad. She's good at that. So for closing that project out, we are there. It's just a matter of the letter being sent and somebody saying, "We're done." And that can't be me. So I ask you to keep that in mind. I've spoken to Mr. Hinks about that and Mr. Smithman. But we just need to say, "We've done all we can." Then we're gonna prepare the letter to ask for reimbursements from the state for the local money that you had to put in for these complaints. I want to do that in the next week also. And I'm working on the 2005, but I can hold that to the other item if you'd like me to.
Does anyone have any questions to ask about Mr. Brutwell or Karen Kennedy?
I have two. Sometime back, I had asked to see what the total cost of this project had been, both in terms of actual dollars and staff time. I have yet to see that. I know it's not done yet and maybe we're waiting, but I truly would like to see because this project is hopefully not indicative of other projects. This is very exceptional. We want to make sure, which brings me to my second question, which is, has a review and audit been done? I assume it has, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, of how to ensure that this never happens again?
I think about it 24/7, to be honest with you.
I know you do, but I'm saying in actual terms.
The audit has happened by the state. Lisa Minter and I have reviewed the financial records. I can get you that. Staff time, I don't even know how to begin to get you staff time accumulated. That's Bob, me, this one, this one.
But even an estimate, because again, that is, that is part of the total cost.
Oh, yeah.
Because staff time's very expensive and we, sometimes we only look at it in terms of dollars and it may be 120 or 1,000 or whatever, but seeing that, Bob, that is a critical part of this.
Commissioner Adams, I think you all deserve an accounting. We'll come up some figures. It's not, it's obviously gonna be some subjectivity. I think the thing that we feel, that I feel probably as badly about as any, is the amount of time, not only that staff has had to take, but Mr. Smithman and Mr. Hinks and the time you all have had to look at it at a number of meetings. It is regretful and staff really feels, I wouldn't say bad, I guess we do feel badly about it. It's just a project that has not gone well and we're trying to figure out ways it never happen again and some of those we can do when we do that accounting for you. But again, we'll never be able to actually put a real dollar value on it because it's been so difficult.
I think we've all learned that that every time you pick up the phone and put it down, that you're gonna, we're gonna document it and so forth so that you have a complete record. But in answer to his first question, the $45,000 that we have discussed, that's not far off on this one project, is it?
Well, I know that's a definite figure, but that's definitely not.
It's gonna go higher than number one.
If you put staff time in it for four years.
This is just.
And I agree, that I think that oftentimes, it's very simple for us to look, oh, it was 45,000, which is terrible. But that doesn't accurately reflect the amount of time, effort, and energy that was put into that project. And that's why, looking at, I know it's probably doubled that figure in staff time over four years.
This project has taken a toll, not only financially, but also emotionally and professionally along the way.
Quality of life issues for the people who are involved, no doubt.
I really want to commend Karen for patience and diligence and in all aspects of this.
So mad it lasted with this project anymore.
You had something to add?
Well, I just want to say, I have, you know, it is so unfortunate, but I've got such a bad taste in my mouth after reviewing all these letters. And when I look at the repairs that are being done and I see, these are things I need to have done in my house. And I'm just wondering how they keep adding these things.
Me too.
You know, it makes me wonder if you shouldn't go in there with a video camera, have a conversation with another person engaged with them, you're taking video of what it is that you're gonna do and this is what we, you know, approved to do. And then this is what you do. And you don't add to it and you don't find chip things and, you know, broken vacuum cleaners and all that. I just, I cannot understand how it accelerates.
I think that's, I think that might be a very good idea. You know, typically, we have, we would have, the consultant is the one we depend upon managing the ongoing aspect of the project. And in this case, that did not happen. I think Mr. Smithman has pointed out to us a couple of times that we need to have those mechanisms in place to make sure that we have that backup and that ability to monitor. So I think it's probably a good idea. We'll try, see if we can't figure out how to do that as well. Again, this was a very unusual project. You know, we hope, never in our lifetimes, you know, Karen has been doing this a good many years and has never seen one like this.
But you know, if they came to me and they wanted to do my house, I think one of the first things I might do is pick up the phone to call somebody that they'd worked on, you know, like last year. So they might get up with this person and they ask them how it went and then she tells them what all she did and what all she was able to get done. And I'm, you know, it's a bad precedent. It really is.
It is, it is. And most definitely agree, Ms. Stevens.
It's hard enough to find good help to start with, much less in this situation.
That was another complication in this project, just finding contractors to work on this.
I experienced it.
Amy, I had that conversation, excuse me, Ms. Stevens, I had that conversation with someone last week about video because these two that you've gotten and the other one we had the major complication with became a issue of what did you really do when you walked in and what didn't you do and what was there when you left. And I've had the conversations with trying to figure out how to video and how to walk up to a house or how to interview a person and feel them out. Because I know at the last Commissioner's meeting that I was attending, there were some comments made about the haves and the have-nots. And it's past that in my eyes. And it's not an issue of who deserves it and who doesn't. It's, for me, it's who's telling the truth and who's not and who's going to scam us in the long run. And that's where I am with it. And it has left a bad taste when this new project comes up and people call because you want to feel them out on the phone to see how that's going. So it is definitely an issue that we need to address and figure out a system so this doesn't happen. Because there are steps and we have readily admitted that staff and consultants dropped the ball on. But we have gone above and beyond that at this point and we're arguing about minutia.
Well, I too have received phone calls about these issues. And it appears that, at least in one case, that the house was in pretty good shape before they started working and then they went in and wrecked it.
That's what she would have you to believe.
That's her story. That's her story.
Well, I see it appears. I haven't seen it. But on a lighter note, today.
There is one?
Mr. Chairman.
We go in to wreck houses.
Today is Karen's birthday. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
Karen and Bob, Ms. Stevens hit on a good point taking those videos. Also, when we have a job or something like this, I think it'd be just as good to take some still photos because both.
We have those.
Oh, you have those? Okay. Because what you have, when you have someone looking to do a project like this, you've got that to fall back on. And you can also take them at the end of the project and compare. I think that'd be beneficial. Also, one quick question, how is DCA working with you? I mean, have they been pretty good or?
No, sir.
That's what I was thinking.
I'm tired of dancing around with the habit of being.
That's something, Mr. Lamont, that we're hoping to get substantially addressed as we close this project out.
I see a lot of this, it looks like it's been going over the county's head, your department's head, straight to DCA. That's the concern I have.
But Karen, as you and I talked, if you want to set up a meeting up at DCA.
Well, I think y'all tried that before and.
They did it once and we.
I don't, you know, I think you need to go up a level personally.
Well, if you want to do, if that's what you feel, coordinate with our county manager and I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you very much. David, you ready for the revaluation waiting update?
If we could, Mr. Kane is in transit and we expect him in about 15 minutes. Could we move to the next item?
Okay, we will move on, we'll hold that and we're waiting to rattle of him and we'll move to the issue of longevity request of Mr. Commissioner Lamont.
Yes, Mr. Hinks. In talking to Sheriff Bryant, who will be finishing his tour with the county in late December, I think we need to address a policy issue, reference longevity. And I think he likes about 18 days or so to reach his longevity for the year. And I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the Finance Committee for a recommendation. I'll read this right.
Are you referring to the longevity check that everyone gets on their anniversary date?
Yes.
Not his retirement or any benefits?
No, no, no. Just longevity, part itself. But this will be a motion to where Sheriff Billy Bryant has served as a citizen of Lee County for many years in his law enforcement capacity. And Sheriff Bryant will be concluding his current office December 4, 2006, a date when a new sheriff will be administered the oath of office. And upon that date, Sheriff Billy Bryant will lack just a few days to be eligible for longevity pay considerations. I'd therefore recommend the Lee County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of his service to the community, hereby refer this to the Finance Committee for recommendation to be considered as his last day will be December 4 for that longevity pay.
I don't have any objections to that. It's just, the only thing I'm concerned about are other employees who reach the same mark.
Well, the thing about it is, and I've talked with Sheriff Bryant too, Sheriff Bryant has no control over this particular situation. Other employees would have.
Other than he could, you know, depending on.
Being elected, being elected to office. Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have that, Kane? Everybody understands the motion? And it's being referred to the Finance Committee for recommendation to us by the next meeting.
Bob, do we really need, do you feel we need to take it to that or can we just dispense it?
I don't think so. I believe, as a member of the Finance Committee, and if Mr. Adams concurs, I'll just make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Just let Mr. Lamont submit it as a, take the referral off and let him submit it as a motion.
Okay.
If you'll see that as an amendment.
I'll just amend that motion to go ahead and adopt it as presented.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Chair?
As long as our clerk has the motion corrected.
Wait till we get to discussion.
Does everybody, everybody understand the motion? That's to take action today, rather than reference to the Finance Committee.
Now, discussion.
That's the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Hall.
Right.
Can we do that?
Without creating a discrimination issue.
He may need to reduce it by the days he didn't serve.
Do we amend it?
You need prorate it.
Prorate. Would you see that as a friendly amendment?
Well, that'd be.
Well, he's only gonna miss it.
I know, I know. Amended to prorate it based on.
Yeah, we could do that. Even the easy reacher.
That's what you're trying to do.
Right.
We could.
Always will.
Okay.
I have to, Commissioner Lamont, do you accept that amendment to your motion?
Yes, sir.
Let him prate, can he?
Any further discussions?
And that's to be effective.
On his day of departure.
Right.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is granted. The motion is adopted unanimously. Commissioner Adams, you had some issues with parks and recreation.
Well, John's here, and I've received a number of phone calls, and been by Kiwanis Park, as well as the park on Tramway Road, where there's quite a bit of soccer activity that takes place. Knowing that there are signs at Kiwanis Park, and the question in certain citizens' minds is, whose responsibility is it to enforce rules at our parks? Short of hiring people to do that, local law enforcement doesn't seem to be interested in that. And what happens is you end up with this kind of growing resentment between citizens who are using it for soccer and such, because it's a beautiful field down there, that, all that grass, and the people who see the rules being violated constantly. So, John's been wonderful to discuss this with, and I know Parks and Rec has picked up this issue. And the issue in Tramway Road seems to be one that John has handled diplomatically, speaking with the individuals who are in charge of those soccer games. And it does seem to be, once they're done, seems to be very cleaned up. And also, he's dealing with the parking on the road along Tramway Road, which is fairly dangerous. And when you talk with these individuals, and they get that taken care of. The situation at Kiwanis is, we do have a big, open, grassy field that tends to get abused and used. And it, you know, you don't just wanna go plant trees on it, and so people can't use it. We can't necessarily enforce it. Law enforcement doesn't want to enforce it. So, the question is, what do you do about that? One of the recommendations I had to John was to create a dog park out of it, at least we fenced it in. But I know that Parks and Rec has looked at this, and I just wanna know how the rest of the commission felt, and how John felt about it, because it's an issue that we need to deal with.
I'm still not understanding what is happening. They're having.
There are signs out there, that is not a soccer field. And so, what happens is there are tons of people.
There are signs that Kiwanis Park is saying, no soccer.
And so, what happens is people come in, and we're talking about a significant number of people that take up all the parking. And we have a trash issue, that it's not being picked up. It's becoming very trashy, and the field's being abused. And the people who come out there to do their walking and just spend time with their kids feel crowded and are very resentful, because they see the sign, they see the people playing, and no one does anything about it. So, where do we go from here on that? Because this is one of those things that over time can create a great deal of resentment in the community. And it's unnecessary.
So, why not plant trees? I mean, even if it was a dog park, where you could, may or dog run.
Well, I mean, there are very few parks where you have a lot of open space. And open space is kind of a nice thing to have in our parks. We have a lot of tree walks, like Sand Lee Park and other places.
Well, I don't mean a lot of trees.
Well, no, but the way to get rid of it is plant lots of trees, and then you get rid of that. But, I don't know, I just, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And I'd like for John to share his thoughts on it. He was very, very forthcoming with me, and I'd like for his thoughts on it.
It is an issue. It has been an issue. As long as you've got grass out there, or a level area to play, there are gonna be people playing soccer out there. We have, and there may be some.
Let me add one caveat. It's organized soccer. This is not just people that, ten people show up and kick a ball around or throw a frisk around. This is an organized soccer match.
These are leagues.
These are league play, yes.
Well, probably need to have a conversation with some of those folks. They may play in a league, another league, and they're using that as their practice facility. There are several issues with it. A lot of times, they'll break off limbs off of our shrubbery to make their goals. I don't particularly appreciate that. The area that, there's two areas at Kiwanis Park where they're not supposed to play soccer. One is that area beside the parking area at the entrance, the level area where you come in. The other one is on the exercise trail. We don't allow it over there. It goes on. We can go out, the staff can go out there and chase the folks off, and as soon as staff leaves, they're right back in there. So, you know, you get to the issue, who's gonna enforce the rules? Do we put somebody out there the entire time? This is generally daylight hours after work, five o'clock till dusk, and on weekends. But not as bad on Sundays. I've been by there on weekends, and especially on Sundays, it's league play. So, they're playing somewhere else on Sundays. But it's mostly after five o'clock and on Saturdays. The park does get crowded. You get a nice day in the seventies, at a low eighties, there're gonna be a lot of people out there. So, that's kind of what we're dealing with. There is a group that's expressed an interest about putting in a playground, a playground similar to what Pinehurst has in their Camelot Park. And we're kicking around the idea of locating it at Kiwanis, where we're gonna put it. If we put something like that in Kiwanis, we're gonna have to expand the parking area. And that was why I said, we may have to expand the parking area into some of that, which would take care of some of the issue, because you're not gonna have as much level space there. So, there are kind of a lot of things going on, and, you know, we.
But your board is addressing that issue, and will bring a recommendation.
We're trying to, yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted people to know it was being looked at as much as anything, and it is being discussed, and it's not being ignored.
Right.
Chair, ready to go?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Tim hasn't arrived yet, so we will proceed with new business. And the first item on there is a request from the Fire Advisory Board for additional personnel and fire marshals office, Mr. Don Andrews and Derek Clausen. Don?
Good morning, Don.
Good morning, Chairman Hinks, Board of Commissioners. Earlier this year, you created the Fire Advisory Board and appointed seven members. Our mission is to make recommendations to the Lee County Board of Commissioners on fire protection and emergency services delivery in Lee County. Over the past few months, the Fire Advisory Board has begun the process of establishing goals for fire service in Lee County. Once the goals and objectives are established, we hope to look at how best to fund the needs of fire service in Lee County. The filling of the fire marshal's position with Derek Clausen has enabled the Fire Advisory Board to move forward. Derek has brought a wealth of knowledge and resources to Lee County. As part of our meeting, we asked Derek to advise us on the status of the fire marshal's office. During our August thirtieth meeting, we were made aware of status of state-required fire inspections, or in this case, like thereof. You should have a copy of a memo that was sent to Chairman Hinks dated August the thirty-first. And as you can see, Lee County has not performed state inspections as required by North Carolina general statutes. As the Fire Advisory Board understands that, Lee County has contracted two part-time inspectors. The use of part-time inspectors does not allow for any continuity in inspections. The part-time inspectors have full-time responsibilities somewhere else. It is the Fire Advisory Board's understanding that there is thirty-nine thousand dollars left from unused funds as a result of vacancy in the fire marshal's office. The Fire Advisory Board is recommending that these funds be used to expedite the hiring of a full-time fire inspector as soon as possible. And I'm glad to answer any questions, or Derek, either one.
Let me just ask a question to the county manager. This thirty-nine thousand dollars, that was in the budget for an inspector? And is that in the current year? I hope that's not a carryover. What is in the current year's budget?
Current year budget, I believe, is about twenty thousand dollars. There's thirty-nine, I think it was thirty-nine, that is left over from previous year that stays in the fire marshal account. If you recall, our fire marshal operation is separate from the general fund.
Right, I understand.
So, it is in that fund.
My question is, did we have money in the current budget to fund this full-time inspector?
Twenty thousand. You had twenty thousand.
We had twenty thousand. That's not enough to fund a position for an entire year. What we were hoping was there'd be enough funds come January to start looking at an inspector. And I think what the Fire Advisory Board is recommending is that we use the funds that are in that fire account to accelerate the hiring of that inspector.
Are the funds in there now being used to pay the part-time people that's doing the inspections?
Yes, sir.
So, that's drawing down every month?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And is this individual replacing the two part-time?
Ultimately. What Mr. Clausen, or Mr. Andrews have outlined in their memos on one, I'm looking at page one oh six, is that we are, we have a great deficit in our.
So, in other words, get caught up, and then you'll only need the one.
That's right. Get caught up, and then cut loose. That's exactly right.
There's two-hundred-and-fifty-nine inspections required annually.
Never saw that.
Yeah. We're not getting it done. And, you know, I don't think we want DOI coming in here and doing inspections for us. And we definitely don't want anything to happen, and they come back that we weren't doing what was required.
So, you'll have.
Preservation of property and life.
You'll have the three, get caught up, and then hopefully scale back to the one.
You have a fire inspector and a fire marshal.
What's the differential between the two part-times and the full-time?
What do you mean, say, as far as difference?
If you were to, like, the cost of two part-times for a full year versus the new full-time?
I couldn't answer that. I mean, what, based off the salary study that George McGee had done, I don't know what the cost per person would be to have the two plus the one full-timer. I could figure that out.
Just the difference. I'm saying, if you had those two part- timers for a year, what's the total cost? And you're looking at the full-time.
Well, the way we're setting up now is completely based on volume. One is completely in response to things coming through the door for plan review.
Like billable time.
Correct. And the other is solely focusing on getting us up to speed on the deficit that you see on page one oh six.
But you thought it was gonna be around twenty thousand.
Let me ask you a last question. What are you paying these part-time inspectors per hour?
We're paying them the same thing that state meters, the person we had contracted with previously, twenty-five dollars an hour.
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
So, the part-time people gonna be making more than the full-time.
Not when you have benefits.
But they didn't have benefits and everything else.
Well, I know.
They'd probably be very similar. They should be very similar.
But it's still, it's gonna equal twenty-five dollars an hour.
After benefits, I would say the full-time people would be at least at around twenty-five dollars an hour, when you add the compensation benefits, health insurance and all that.
Vacation.
And this, this motion, or this recommendation is gonna be a recurring expense to be dealt with in the budget next year, right?
Absolutely. And that was our plan in this year's budget, right.
So, we got money now, but it's gonna be new money come next budget time.
That is correct. And that's not unanticipated.
Are these two part-time doing the same amount of work as a full-time person would be?
It's, when you look at what we've done so far, yeah, they're right there with the amount of work that's required of them. So, you know, if we get a full-time position, plus with the part- timers we have, we're gonna be able to get caught up. Okay? The problem we've got is, is just a sheer deficit of where we're at. You know, once we got to looking at this issue, and once we got into the problems, what we're dealing with, you can look in the memo that I sent. When you look between two thousand one and two thousand four, there were about a, less than a hundred and twenty-five inspections done in the county. That was over a four-year period. So, you know, when you look at section one oh six of North Carolina statute, and the inspections that are required by the state, you know, the more we dig, the more we find, the worse it gets. Basically, we've been concentrating on the last sixty days, just getting an assessment of all the county occupancies in the county, because that was one thing we didn't really have a good handle on, was, hey, how many buildings have we got to inspect? What's out there that, you know, what are we behind on? Now, one thing I can tell you that we are caught up on currently, we've been working real close with the school system. As a matter of fact, this week and next week, Dr. McCormick, Stabs, Dr. Anson, we've had two meetings. These next two weeks, we're gonna effort and get into all the schools within the next two weeks doing inspections there. Daycare inspections, foster care, the foster care inspection, those are the things we've been concentrating on so far, plus doing a county-wide assessment. And basically, what we've done in the assessment, we've burned every road in the county. We took a list from Strategic Services, Don Kevosic, worked real close with his office, and we just went and started writing down addresses and businesses and comparing and make sure we had it. So, you know, before we figured out what we had, you know, we had to go down and look at what we had before we could say, hey, this is what we're at. And these are the facts that have come to light since we've done that assessment.
Well, we are required to do these inspections by general statute, and we need a fire inspector to do it. We have a tremendous liability situation if we don't do the inspections and something happens. Therefore, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Fire Advisory Board.
Okay. I just have one question. Derek, when would you be, when would you be certified to make inspections at this level?
Okay, right now, I'm what they call a certified level-two probationary inspector. There's only, there's thirty inspections a year that, right now, that a level-three has to be, that I'm not a level-three. So, when you look at that number, I've got to be a level-two inspector for one year. So, I've got approximately two and a half years left before I can do that.
Which I think what, and I got a new comment, but I think what you just said is, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty-nine businesses to be inspected annually, there's only thirty-three that you can't do.
That's right. That's correct.
Today.
Today.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
If I would, I want to point out, Mr. Brown, if we could, in that motion, assign a grade sixty-six per the recommendation of Ms. McGee, that would officially add the position to the pay classification schedule.
And what is that?
It's on.
It's on page one oh four.
One oh nine, I think.
Grade sixty-six is thirty-four thousand, seven fifty-one, to a maximum of forty-eight, six fifty.
I'll go on with that.
Craig, do you accept that?
Yes.
Everyone understand the motion?
I got a question. We had a contract with the city. What did they do for us? Well, I was, I was in, I was in emergency management at that particular time. We had, I think, seventeen thousand dollars in the budget for inspections. Is that correct?
Seventeen, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And you see the record. And it was a concern of emergency management that these inspections were not being done. And as far as I know, the city got all the money that was allocated.
I think if you do the math, Mr. Pascal, you'll see that out of roughly seven-hundred-and-fifty inspections required over a three-year period, the city performed a hundred and eight.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Let me ask a question here. So far, Derek, so far as the proposed new school, will you be able to do any inspections or sign off on any plans that, you know, if this school is built and everything?
Talking about the middle school?
Yes, yes.
Will you be able to do any of the inspections as fast as that thing is gonna be moving?
Yes, sir. The city, because where it's been in the city, the city has to do the plan reviews and all those types of things. The only thing that our office will be allowed to do by statute is the state-required inspections twice a year. And we're doing all the.
That's after it's done.
After it's done, that's correct. That's all we can do.
Just if you would clarify, I'm not sure they answer myself, but does the city inspect the schools that are located in the city limits twice a year?
No, we do that. We're doing that.
Okay. Why?
The concern was, and this was prior to me coming here, with the old fire marshal, when TJ was here, what the concern was there, was you had city inspectors coming in and inspecting some of the schools in the city, and then you had the county fire marshal's office going out doing schools out in the county. And there was a lack of consistency and continuity within the inspections that were being done, because one thing that the city inspectors were looking for might not have been the same thing that the county inspector was looking for. So, in the sake of trying to get consistency and continuity between the inspections, and working with the school system and getting that relationship built, which we're continuing that relationship, that's why the county fire marshal's office, when TJ was here, that's when he elected to try to get all the counties and schools and him do all those inspections. So, we're continuing that, because there has been some, I guess you could say. So we're continuing that because there has been some, I guess you could say, advantages realized from the fact that having that consistency and continuity was going in, that's going to schools, and everybody doing it.
You know, what I see is there was great consistency because no one was doing any of that.
I'm saying for now.
Okay. So that is the way the fire marshal's office would like to proceed?
And if you look at the numbers from when Steady was here, there were some, the school inspections were being done for sure based off the documentation we had. So the schools were being done in the time that the contract, the steady mirrors was enforced. The schools were being inspected.
Right.
So we've got that documentation available.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got some concerns about this. But I do appreciate every bit of the work that the Fire Advisory Board and everyone has done, including you, Mr. Clauston. But I think we're moving extremely too fast, too hastily on this. Mr. Clauston's been in the position since 6/19, I believe it is. And I know, I know the inspections need to be done. But I do have quite a few concerns about it. And so far as the part-time's concerned, as well as hiring a new fire inspector, as well as keeping the ones till, the part-time until everything's caught up. If two can't do it now, what's one gonna do?
Well, two are just working one day a week, aren't they?
They come in, they can schedule their, when they schedule their time, we base it off of the needs for that.
But isn't it just one or two days a week?
Yes, sir, that's correct. That's correct.
And do I understand that once we get caught up, that part-time will no longer be working?
And I think at that time also, something that needs to be said, is we will need to reassess that, you know. Once we get all this done and we get the full-timer in, you know, we'll have a better handle of what we can accomplish. Because one thing that you don't see anywhere in this is re-inspections. And this is gonna be, you know, we're coming from this from an educational perspective. With the business owners and the occupancies that we're gonna go out, we're gonna inspect. And we're not coming in here with an enforcement perspective right off the bat. We're gonna go in there and try to educate them on the enforcement of fire prevention acts and the things that we're looking for. You know, once this is done and once everything is there and we get, we figure out how many re-inspections we're doing and all this, and we look at, we can adequately determine the work that we're saying, that we'll come back and make a determination from there.
And Don, you guys have looked, your committee's looked at this extensively.
Yes.
It's not just predates, it even predates fire marshal.
Well, the fire marshal and the Fire Advisory Board was strained on August the 30th. Derek didn't, he just didn't come in and say, I need a fire inspector. If you know, to make up the Fire Advisory Board, nothing gets done quickly.
That's right.
It took us five hours to come up with four sentences during the week. We don't do anything quickly. So, yeah, we've had a long conversation about this. And, you know, referring to the February first report from the Fire Task Force, they also, in their recommendations of hiring a fire marshal, the next step would be the fire inspector. And, you know, we just feel like we're not jumping into this, but these things are not getting done. And we've been lucky.
He's just adding up.
Yeah, we've been lucky. So if we can get the fire inspector, we can get caught up. Then you got a fire inspector and a fire marshal. Between the two, you should be able to stay caught up.
Well, I know you've put a lot of time into it, so has Bob, and appreciate all the work you guys have all done, working together.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the table with the, to approve the recommendations together with the pay grade. Any further discussions? Commissioner Lamont?
Yes, sir. I move to table this until the next meeting.
Press the motion. A motion has been made to table. All in favor of table and this motion is signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The motion to table is not adjusted. We will now go to vote on the motion itself. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion is adopted. I vote a five, two, one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we finally ready for old business update on 2007 revaluation project?
I know that I am ready.
Okay. Proceed.
Before they get started, let me preface their comments by saying that things have, are really going well in tax departments in general, but especially the revale project. We are nearing the deliverable, which is the schedule of values. I think today's report is gonna shed a lot of light on what's been going on up there.
When are we gonna approve the schedule?
I'll let Mr. Kane give you that, but I want to formally recognize Ms. Faulkner and the work that she's been doing, working closely with Mr. Kane, bringing together all the loose ends and just helping make sure everything's on track and ready for that schedule of values delivery. And she's gonna give a little, a few minutes on what's going on from the county's perspective. And then your contractor, Mr. Kane, will give you a report on the schedule of values development.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. First of all, I'd like to say that we're very excited about working with Johnny Edmondson. Hady Cutten be here today, but I know with his experience and expertise that he will guide us down the right path. And we are excited to be working with him.
Is that microphone on?
I saw the voice. To update you on the revale, we have made a lot of progress in the last couple of months. Our residential and commercial data collection wrapped up at the end of May. And our industrial properties were completed last month. And we've only have about a hundred and eighty exempt parcels remaining to complete as far as our field work.
Which ones are left? How many are left?
Exempt, our exempt parcels, such as our churches, things that really don't affect the tax base anyway. About a hundred and eighty. Not many. We are currently working on picking up our new construction and visiting those properties several times. And we're getting that information keyed in and getting it to Tim as soon as we can. So he can finish up with the information he needs on that. Shifting the focus over to data entry, first part of July, we were behind Tim's schedule in getting those properties reviewed. But thanks to the hard work and the extra hours put in by the appraisal staff, we were able to get back on schedule by the end of July. And I would like to thank Mr. Smitherman for his help in changing the pay scale of our data entry personnel. With that new incentive to increase the productivity and decrease their errors, our data entry staff actually finished about three weeks early, which allowed our appraisal staff to finish our reviews and hand over our last delivery to Mr. Kane about a week early. I'm very grateful for the unbelievable effort that was put forth on the appraisal staff, as well as help from listing and collections department with printing property record cards, which did allow us to devote all our time to reviewing. Last week, we finished keying the grades and conditions of all our residential property. And we're now looking forward to assessment solutions, setting up our cost tables based on the new schedules so that we can view our new property values. Once the schedule of values has been adopted and our new notices are sent out, we can begin the final phase of this project, which are the appeals. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any important to do, any questions, Ms. Faulkner?
Well, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the report that she gave and the credit that she gave. It's given to those that were in the trenches and worked so diligently to catch up.
They did put in a lot of hours.
And get us back on schedule. So thanks a lot, Lisa.
Thank you.
Tim?
Good morning. Good morning to you. I guess I'm here to answer any questions if you have. As Lisa indicated, they finished the conditions and construction quality Friday. The tax cards were updated over the weekend, from what I understand. We've got two shifts. We've actually pulled a crew from Wilson County. So we've got two shifts starting today. We will be delivering the schedule of values October 30th. Adoption can take place two weeks after that. We can have a work session anywhere during that fifteen days after delivery, based on your schedule.
So how do you feel it's going?
I think it's going really well. Night and day in four months.
All of the quality checks are being done?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We have reviewed all our properties, once they were keyed in. That's what we were really behind on, still, and all the reviewing done. And that's what we worked overtime, basically, afternoons, weekends, to get that information caught up so that he would have good reliable data.
As you know, you and I, Bob, have talked about this in the past. We want to see a good cost-sales ratio analysis twelve months after all this is done. I'll be looking anxiously to see how that turns out.
Not putting any pressure on.
We do want the values to grow, though. You do want the county to appreciate.
Yes.
And by appreciating, you know, it won't always stay at a hundred percent.
If it stagnates, then it'll be perfect for a long time, but that would not be good news for the county.
The good thing is we're now on a four-year schedule instead of eight.
Yeah.
When do these revales go out? I mean, I've had people call me, they, I don't know if they're wanting it there having to pay this year or is it next year or?
It's next year, it's 2007. We're gonna try to send out our new notices hopefully in February. You know, schedule and everything's adopted and on schedule. Hopefully, February, we'll send out all our new notices to the citizens, letting them know what the new value is. And at that time, if they don't agree with it, we'll start our field work.
But you also picked up a lot during the full listing measure that was incorporated in some of the bills this year, wasn't it? That's what, that may be the confusion, that there's a difference between the revale and the full listing measure we picked up. People are getting new bills.
Right. In other words, they picked up quite a bit of new values, new construction, additions, whatever. And those are being reflected in the bills that they're getting this year.
Some of them, but then the Board of Equalization Review made a decision to defer some of these to 2007. Right? The majority.
But go back to your question. The absolutely soonest that you can send notices out is fifty-three days. Everything is in a very deliberate schedule. And so once the schedule of values has been presented to the Board of Commissioners, fifty-three days later, if everything is hit just perfectly, you can send notices out. But as I said, you can have, for instance, a work session a week later. You can adopt the schedule a week after that. You've got thirty days for appeals process. And after that, it's just putting everything together and sending it out. So.
They just had their concern, and I thought we might see what I can find out on it. Because you get kind of a mixed feeling about it, you know, they're just unsure about it.
Well, that's one of the things that we wanted to do too, is talk about some town hall meetings. We need to get out there and answer some questions.
Right.
Because there are a lot of questions throughout the county. And if we can answer more of those questions now, even before the notices go out, it's gonna make it a lot smoother process when that does happen.
Okay, does anyone have any additional, any more questions to ask of Tim or Lisa?
I would like to make a comment, just, I think the board's aware that the Board of Equalization and Review will be meeting in the coming days and speaking with Chairman Adcock. They are interested in preparing themselves for the appeal process in the spring of 2007. And will be using some external education sources, like the Department of Revenue, maybe the Institute of Government, to provide, quote, "training" for our local Board of E and R as to how to review revaluation appeals. So I just want the board to be reassured that the Board of E and R is aware of the significance of their task and is gonna be working to prepare themselves for that, for the spring exercise.
We also have a meeting today with Michael Bryan.
Great. No, I didn't.
He's just coming in and just making sure we're on track with everything.
He's with the Department of Revenue.
Thank you, thank you.
We thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
The next item are concerning the middle school and Floyd Knight Construction budgetary request. Before we get into that, I have a question. Height and Associates are out for bids. Is that, that's correct? They've gone out for bids?
That's correct.
That's correct?
Well, pre-qualifying.
What? What's, I'm, go ahead.
Well, we're using a pre-qualifying bid process.
Right.
And that-
But that process is starting?
It's starting. That's correct. Starting a week to go.
And if I recall the schedule that Mr. Height put out, that he was anticipating having the bid results somewhere around the 23rd or 24th of October. Is that correct?
It was actually October 25th.
October 25th?
Bid open.
And the bid opening is still scheduled for October 25th?
Well, there was a letter that was mailed, Mr. Hinks, on September 9th from the county manager's office, signed by Ms. Minter, asking that the bid be open on November 1st, which is on Saturday.
Can you come up to the microphone? What was, what was behind this? Why delay the bid open?
We want to keep those bids good for forty-five days for the process of our COPS issuance, LGC approval, things like that.
But there's, but there's a process after the bids are open to go through and analyze those. And perhaps, and I recall on the, on Southern Lee, we went through a series of meetings, making reductions, alterations, and so forth, before you could even consider going to the local government commission.
Our schedule still allows for that period. We're just asking for it to start one week later. We still are allowing the same amount of time for the bid negotiations. We're just asking for that clock to start one day later. And it's really to coordinate our process with the local government commission's meeting.
One day later from what date?
One day or one week?
One week, I'm sorry. One week.
One week.
November.
The period available is the same. It's just a coordination effort. And the schools have been excellent modifying their schedule to accommodate the predetermined pattern that we have to go down to get in front of the LGC on their December agenda.
Was that your understanding, Bill, from the letter?
That was my understanding, yes.
That letter? It's on page 118A. It starts there.
One, midman?
Yes, that's correct.
My copy shows that that's preliminary schedule, which at the bottom of the page is page one, about midway, November 1, bid openings. That is a small, that is just a weak difference in the architect's plan of bid opening October 25th. And it was our understanding that last week's board meeting, the Board of Education meeting, was that it was to work within the schedule of local government commission and the process that has to be done by the commissioners and the county manager.
So David, you'd still want to exclude the possibility of this being a bond, right?
I have no preference. We are operating on the schedule, on a schedule per your last resolution, which was to direct us, that it was your intention to issue certificates of participation.
Well, I have some reservations about approving a figure before we see the bids.
So do I.
And my understanding that we got until October 14th, 16th.
October 16th.
And that's a week before the bids will be, well, actually two weeks.
That's what I don't understand. Why don't we just wait until we get the bids in?
We have to draw the instruments for the debt issuance. We have to have an anticipated number. And it has to be, it's not just the schools' projects, but it will also be the community college projects, the county's projects. And it will be a total issuance amount. And we have to develop that within a reasonable plus or minus to do a pre-application to the LGC for our bond council to draw the necessary instruments to move forward. And it has to be a total debt issuance number. So if that number is approximately thirty million, the LGC wants to see that this board is on record as saying that we are ready to go forward with a debt issuance of thirty million. They don't necessarily care at that point which part is for the middle school. They want to know what the cumulative debt issuance of the county is anticipated to be. They want to know what the cumulative debt issuance of the county is anticipated to be.
Doesn't that make it tough on negotiating, David, when you tell somebody what you're willing to pay for something?
Again, we don't have to specify which part goes to which project.
Well, why don't you just make us a resolution on the total amount then?
On the 16th, that is exactly what will be placed in front of you by your bond council. Now, the point of today is we need to know whether or not we're going to tentatively move forward with a $17 million budget for this part or a $24 million budget. That's a big difference when we're developing a total debt issuance.
I'd rather not even talk about it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I want to say this. I've got some reservations about this myself. I mean, here we were looking, and we stated a 17 and a half billion dollar appropriation by this board. And if I remember correctly, the school board requested, I think it was a $24 million project for the middle school. And now we're looking at this figure of, which would include both the projects here of the 24 million, let me find the numbers, $24,339,700. And the 1,616,116 dollars for the Floyd L. Knight School. And in talking to Commissioner Reeves, we were looking at, he also has some reservations and concerns that this is, this extra 6,789,700 dollars would be added to the middle school project regardless of what we appropriated or what the school board had asked for, the original 24 million. And.
I don't, I don't think that that's, I don't think that that is necessarily correct, that you'd have had another six just on the middle school, because I think the school board came back and they, and I have the, I have our, brought a copy, my copy of the 2007-11 Capital Improvement Program of what the school requested, the school board requested. And for the middle school, somewhere in here, it's.
At this point, there's some good.
If we budgeted $24 million, would they still add the 6.7 million?
The answer to that is no.
No. The school, the school requested 24,606. It was recommended by the County Manager that it be 24,606. And that was for the total construction of the new middle school, including furniture and fixtures, architectural fees, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, the turnkey cost. And then, when this was adopted, it was knocked down to 17,500. Now, the answer to that is that the, and I'm not, I'm not giving any deference to the school board on this, but they have been rather consistent with what, what they initially requested and what the estimates are coming from the architect. And we won't know anything, anything different until we, you know, open up the bids.
Well, they have, they have put out for the bids. Is that correct?
Yes. They're in the process of the, of going out for bids. The, 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 well, let's see, what am I talking about? Floyd Knight Construction Project is coming in a bit higher than we had anticipated. However, that does include the therapy pool. But there are a few of us involved in trying to get that reduced through some local, no. Well, I'm just saying, what I'm working on is some local donations.
Right.
And we're working on that. But at the time of the million five, I do not believe that that included the pool itself.
No, it did not.
And that just included the construction of the addition, which is strongly needed.
Was that the meeting that you came into, the school board, is that right, Bill? Was that the meeting that I came to the school board meeting and Chairman Hanks came in later?
Yeah, I think you were, I think that's correct.
I'd like to point out also that in the effort to minimize the cost, we worked very closely with the Parks and Recreation Department for the county. This, this number does include, if you'll note on the resolution that we prepared by the Board of Education, this number does include the two additional ball fields, one baseball, one softball field. It includes the lighting for all the softball and baseball fields, as well as irrigation. That is, comes to a tune of $806,000 that we, as the Board of Education, included. So that while contractors are bidding the major project, these are alt adds to the, to the bid package in the hopes of reducing the total cost rather than a contractor going and building a field on its own. Another thing that was pointed out is by incorporating both projects, it, it allows the, some of the permitting processes to go more smoothly. So the, I think that to the Commissioners, you would want to deduct $806,000 out of this resolution, which would bring the actual estimated cost for the middle school project to be $23,533,700.
Well, that's, that is all dependent, Bill, of how the bids come in.
That's, that's, everything is predicated by the bid.
Predicated on that.
That's right.
And I think, I think that was the wisest thing for the school board to do, because it does give us the, through Parks and Recreation, and I've been in conversation with Kenny Cole about this, that when the bids come in and we can make those decisions of how much it's going to be, because this goes back to the Part F grants that we have received, of how much is going to be applied there. Or whether we're just going to ignore what has come in through the school board and go out for bids ourselves on those issues. So we do have those decisions to make. Now, to go back to the, excuse me, what?
Go ahead. I'm just still trying to figure out why we're approving numbers prior to the bids being submitted. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm.
Are you working back? Okay.
Yeah, I'm working back to that. In order to comply, David, with the, with the, with the requirements of the LGC and to allow some sort of legal documentation to take place, could we just come up with a, with a, one number that we can approve here today, which would include all of this, Floyd Knight, and include the.
Community College.
The community college and all of that. Can you just come up with that number, since you had stated that you don't care what the breakdown is?
If it makes the board feel more comfortable, we can wait till October 16th. And I can present you a resolution that says that we are, have these projects and we are willing to issue debt up to $32 million, or not to exceed a certain amount of money.
I make a motion, we table this until October 16th to give the County Manager.
Why until October 16th?
Well, that will, on the schedule of activities for this issuance on page 118C, that is the day that you adopt the resolution of findings, which will include that amount. That will be an official action per some LGC process requirements.
Okay. What's your, what's your motion, Ron?
Table it.
Table both of these items.
October 16th meeting and County Manager accomplished what he just proposed to do.
Okay, the motion is on the table to, to defer for consideration until October.
16th.
16th.
This will be for both items, is that correct?
Both items, middle school and Floyd Knight.
As well as community college and county projects.
Yep.
Bring that back to us.
That's not on here.
Then we'll, we'll have a better idea of the total figure that we.
Everybody understand the motion?
Just have one.
Around 31 million.
Have further discussion.
Just one comment that, that I realize the necessity of doing these things, but I am concerned about the growing. Again, I'll just repeat that I'm concerned that removing taxpayers from their ability to vote on bond issuance is a concern and one that I'm seeing more and more across the state, that the taxpayers are being removed from the process by using COPS more and more and more. But having said that, these are necessary projects. Go ahead.
Oh, question. Well, everybody.
You're not supposed to discuss a table motion.
Well, he had.
His comment.
These are just comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion has been made to table until our October 16th meeting. Any further considerations on the middle school and Floyd Knight Construction Budget Request? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks for attending.
I'd like to make one final comment. Regarding the construction cost that Mr. Lamond raised.
Yes.
The building construction cost is estimated at $17,550,000, which is not far from what was the comment made earlier.
I understand.
That does not include site work or any other incidentals of the project. That is just the building itself.
The extra firm, or the architectural fees, or the furniture and fixtures.
Why is that site worth that much?
$2 million.
Yeah, a little over $2.
No, now, $300,000 is for your, for your ballpark. Again, everything is estimates. But based on, everything that we're doing is estimated on current projects in and around the state of North Carolina. That's the only way we can evaluate what our estimated cost is at this time. Hopefully, it's so.
Didn't cost that much for the house, did it?
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think it was relatively, it was relative to the amount of dirt. You also need to, if you're riding by there, you notice that the, this property has a topography issue in balancing the dirt that's on this project. There's about a 14-foot fall on the back side.
So are they having to move any of the ballparks around, or are they keeping that original plan?
The only thing that's been done, as I understand it from speaking with Mr. Payne and Mr. Cole, is they flipped the softball and the baseball field.
Does that make a difference? Does that make a difference in that slope?
No. All that was, that was to accommodate the walking trail that was in the master plan for the Part L. And the school footprint, the middle school footprint contingent to the, to the ball fields, they just merely moved the softball to the baseball and flipped the two fields. Very minor.
Only good news is that gas is down a little bit.
The what?
Our gas prices are at least down about 25% for now.
Well, this board, I think, has committed to build this school and to do these projects. And we're going to do it. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we are spending our money wisely and that the taxpayer, taxpayer's money is not being wasted. We put a figure out there that we're willing to pay, that's how much we're going to have to pay. And once it's mentioned, I mean, that's what they get drilled in their heads, yeah.
Dave?
Thank you.
We haven't taken a vote yet, have we? On this, on the motion to table, the motion to defer until October 16th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ball should be adopted unanimously. Bill and Jim? Jim, want to thank you for coming. The next item on the agenda is discussion concerning Caremark Prescription Drug Cars, Mike Gaines and Charles Clifford.
Good morning. Good morning to y'all today. Good morning. We are here, everybody knows Charles Clifford, a pharmacist on our Board of Health and down at Medicine Park Pharmacy. And let me just say just a word or two. You know, we help pharmacy, you know, as y'all know, constantly work on ways to try to get a good healthcare value for folks. And when we first heard about this cart, you know, it sounded great. And, and I, as I told Mr. Clifford, I wanted to believe in Santa Claus as much as anybody. It just sounded almost too good. And so, we began to ask a few questions about it. And Mr. Clifford began to enlighten the board about it. And the board eventually decided that they would, they would have to kind of withdraw support for this arrangement.
The entire board?
Yes, it was unanimous vote that evening, I believe.
I wasn't in attendance.
That evening. And so, so we're here today to explain our position. And if I could hand these out and turn it over to Mr. Clifford.
I've never attended one.
The one thing, I want to point out for you is that when this, this thing was presented, it was, it was presented as a savings to the citizens.
Yes.
And to be less fortunate in our, in our community.
Would receive a.
Whatever. Okay. And that is my concern, that we're consistent with that philosophy.
Budget Association.
Just sitting back here listening, everything always comes down to dead presidents. I mean, this, every meeting, every talk is always come down to money. And this is what this is all about, is money. This is a presentation I've had opportunity to go around Lee County. And every presentation I've made, this head of the group has brought it to an end. But I'll make this quick for you. If you go to the second page, who are these guys? You go to the third page. These three guys are head of PBMs. And the contract, not only with what we receive for the discount card, but also the contract that the county does with the PBM, I guarantee you don't find the word fiduciary. They don't use the word fiduciary. I'd put my headlights up and say something's wrong. 80% of prescriptions are handled by these three. Going down to like the fourth page, a pharmacy benefit manager serves as a middleman between health plans and pharmaceutical manufacturers.
Charles, you don't have to worry about.
Time?
About time on this, because this, all this is very important.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Hanks. Okay, I'll slow down. Most people do not understand what a pharmacy benefit manager is. It's a hidden person that is tucked away. You have gone to the pharmacy and you had the words, you know, it's a prior authorization required to us be able to fill this prescription, not only on a discount card, but on your own county cards. Did you ever have that? It comes up to times where we can't fill it because your insurance company won't fill it. And generally, what it comes back to, it's not on the formulary. And the reason why it's not on the formulary, and I'll get into it later, is probably because the PBM is not getting a rebate. In the contract that was sent to the county, the PBM retains 100% of the rebates. That's what this all gets down to. They want the money. This is a minefield to acquire what cash-paying customers are left out there. They get the data. And if you go over to, it's like the 13th page. This is how PB, it's bound in the middle section. And it says PBMs. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. It says his, PBMs generate big money.
I'm not past Lee's yet.
That was a bad page.
I'll, I'll come back to that. And that is a quote from the executive director.
Uh, yeah, I saw that.
And a very honorable man. Maybe I shouldn't have jumped around, but.
Should've numbered these pages.
Yes, sir. Well, I.
Well, just go down to the, the page by page.
Page by, okay, okay, I'm sorry. All right.
Uh, you started with to the pharmacy, the PBM dictates.
The PBMs send a contract to the pharmacy. There is no negotiation whatsoever. A contract is sent. I've been doing pharmacy thirty years. I have never seen a person from a PBM and come in and say, uh, can we work out this contract? This is what we'll do. So not only do they set the tone and the amount of what the contract is for the pharmacy, they set the timeline when they are going to pay the pharmacy. And on top of that, they gather all the data that is from the pharmacy, not only if it's independent, but the chain itself. In the world of pharmacy, our competition as an independent is not CVS, it's not Actra, it's not Rite Aid. It comes from the PBM who owns the mail order companies. The PBMs own the mail order companies. And this is the strength of the PBMs, are their mail order companies. This is why they want, another reason why they want the information, they want to be able to call up and send.
So they get the data that, from your client list?
Exactly.
So they're, they get your client list and then they can market directly to your client list and bypass you?
Exactly.
So you're giving your competition all of your data?
Exactly. And these are the guys that say, we're gonna pay you a dollar and fifty cents a prescription. Gentlemen, you can't go down to La Dose Vita, you can't go to Elizabeth's and get a slice of pizza for a dollar and fifty cents. So, and then average cost on a prescription from pharmacy school says, says it costs nine dollars to fill a prescription. These guys wants to give us a dollar and fifty cents. And as you saw here, uh, the quote from Dr. David Work. Every couple of years, the media rediscover the blood sucking worm used as a treatment for an obscure disease, the leech. And PBMs fulfill that definition. A person who clings to another person for personal gain, especially without giving anything in return and usually the implication of exhausting the other resources. He's doing it to us not on the retail level, but it's also, we're involved into it on the county level, on our county plan. As Mr. Work says and as I just said, you know, the dollar and fifty cents is what we get out of it. The pharmacy benefit managers do not make diagnosis. They don't prescribe drugs. They don't do anything for healthcare other than, um, as I say, collect the data and set their own mail orders out to profit for their own selves. And once again, there is no other healthcare system in the world that has pharmacy benefit managers in place. The United States is the only place. Um, a figure that was given out fourteen percent, fourteen point six percent of gross domestic product in the United States attributed to healthcare. Now I can get down to the part where how PBMs make money. This is the figures that were given to me by a gentleman named Charlie Callahan. There are transparent PBMs and there's non-transparent PBMs. Just in a question, does this board realize what type of PBM that, uh, the county deals with? Probably not, because it comes back to, if I use the terms, AWP minus ten percent plus a dollar and fifty. Does that mean anything to you? What it is, most people do not understand the nature of PBMs. It is big money, huge amounts of money. The rebates. And Charlie said that he used the dollar and thirty-five cents prescription, uh, on rebates just to get the figures down because it's hard to believe the bottom line. But on brand name drugs, they receive anywhere from eight to ten dollars on rebates. This county is giving away our rebates on our county plan. This is what these guys are all about on this discount plan. They want the information, they want to gather it, they can go back to the manufacturers, say on discount card, we want the, now, we have moved this drug, now we're entitled to the rebates. Another one that it comes down to is, um, um, they gather the information as far as, they sell the information on what doctors are writing those prescriptions. They sell that to a whole another industry, uh, a company called IMS. They gathered the data, they sell it back to the pharmacy manufacturers, they take the data and they can sell it back to the pharmacy manufacturers, what doctors are writing what drugs. Once again, this comes back to the discount card. It is to set these people in motion to make money. Enough of the money that this gentleman right here, Caremark?
Hmm.
Who you're dealing with, just tapped out for two hundred and eleven million dollars worth of stock options. They generate a lot of money for them to be able to pay their CEO that type of money.
This looks kinda like my phone bill. Access fees.
And just one quick quote, and I'll just get away from this, and, uh, this is a quote here from the human resource manager of Caterpillar. Caterpillar, IBM, and one other company went together and started saying, we've had enough from the PBMs. We want to dictate our terms to the PBMs instead of the PBMs coming back to us. And he quotes in here, PBMs and health plans gain the most economic benefit from maximizing rebates earned on dispensing drugs, generating the greatest spread between the price they buy the products and the price they sell to us and constructing a preferred formula to drive market share to products where the rebates are the highest. Gentlemen, you approve this, all you're doing is adding money on to Caremark. That's the bottom line. We have a place in Lee County for indigenous people to be able to go down to Helping Hands. The Caremark plan, the discount card plan is nothing but a minefield for data. And I would ask you to support us in saying no to this plan. We have a plan in place with, um, the Helping Hands, but if you approve this, and I understand, believe me. I have people come into the store all the time. Billy Cameron and Bob Cameron are two of the most gracious people I have ever known and not enough is said about. But people come in, there have been many times we give the medicine away. And when you have drugs come in your back door, that we have a box, just one box, has two hundred and fourteen capsules to it and it cost us twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars to put that into our stock. Gentlemen, we won't stay in business much longer at a dollar and fifty cent dispensing fee. And that's what these guys want to give us. And I'll finish it up, one other thing. This is what you're used to seeing is a pill most time. This is why I feel like I'm having to swallow, is that right there. That's an actual capsule, used for horses.
I was getting ready to say.
And that's why I feel like you're, we're trying, it's being shoved down our throats.
How many people are involved in this, Mike?
I'm sorry.
Well, Mike, could you get back up, 'cause I have a few, feeling a few questions are gonna come your way.
How, how many people are involved in this?
Involved, you mean are citizens that are participants?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I would, I can look up that data, but it's very few in Lee County because we had just started, you know, issuing the card, before questions arose. And as we asked questions and then, uh, Mr. Clifford began to enlighten us on how this is to work, but I don't know a number, I mean, by, I don't know any. I can get it for you though, I can get it for you today.
Caremark is.
Have they been using that card? Have they actually presented that?
We have seen, you know, occasionally, 'cause I looked up the information several weeks ago, we've had two people come through the store that have used the card.
Mike, what, just a hand, there had to be, for your board, minus Amy, to be so set against this, maybe it was there. Um, what was it that really was the tipping point? I mean, 'cause when I read, when we originally adopted this, my, my concern was the way they were, they'll, they have to derive income. There's not something for nothing, and they were deriving it from the rebates and from, you know, the arrangement between drug companies. It looked, I didn't like it when I saw it, but what made your board turn on this?
Well, I think it was just a gradual, uh, enlightenment of what was really going on. Culminating in Mr. Clifford's presentation on, I think, maybe two occasions to the board to let us, let the board know, uh, how the system really worked. I mean, we, um, yeah, we had Joyce, Joyce Wagon, remember Joyce Wagon was our director of nursing? We had some questions about it and she would, she would call around and we got kind of a, uh, kind of a limp and a vague explanation about, well, it just generates more traffic and so, well, that's the way they can give the discount. We, Joyce and myself, Mr. Clifford, uh, attended a, uh, a, it was a teleconference that was broadcast jointly by, uh, NACO and, and Caremark. And, uh, first of all, the appearance was an absolute infomercial, if there ever was one, it was an infomercial. The only thing they didn't have.
Sneak isn't pushing it hard.
Anything they didn't have, the only thing they didn't have was a British accent guy there with pots and pans, it was that obvious. And the questions that we asked were totally ignored. And so we did not get good, good feedback from our inquiries at that level. And so, and here again, and then Mr. Clifford presented to the board and the board felt there was enough doubt and suspicion because of the, the data mining, the incredible rate rebates, that they were not being, they weren't being honest about. Uh, and we felt that we should, uh, back up on.
In fact, on his, on Mr. Crawford's two hundred and eleven million dollars, there's, uh, investigations on how that was done. The PBM industries, there's twenty different, there's a total of a hundred and sixty-seven PBMs out there. The big three, Caremark, um, Per Express.
Medco.
And Medco. They have eighty percent of the business out there.
Are there other pharmacists that share your concerns, you're in town?
They, they are, sad to say. I would bet most pharmacists and we would deal with are in the chains and have no idea, it, it all pays the same to them. You know, whether they fill one prescription for the day or whether they fill five hundred for the day. A lot, most people in the healthcare industry have no idea what happens with PBMs. They are a hidden entity. And I'm asking this board, let's take a look at what we're doing here with our own, uh, card for our own county employees. Was involved with the company that did a audit. You audit your own records for bookkeeping here in the county on financial matters? You know, I guarantee you, if you audit your prescription records, you're gonna find out how much money you're giving away to the mail order houses taking care of it now. When they take, uh, Medco was found out, they were fined like twenty million dollars because they're, you know, the state of Ohio, because they were taking generics at such a low price and making such a, they don't use fiduciary. They're not, you know, looking out for our best interests on the local level, on the state level and nationally.
Well, actually, they're just a bunch of legalized, uh, pill pushing, uh, shysters.
Uh, they're a bunch of, let me just put it this way.
Watch yourself.
Yeah.
All right, a bunch of guys in white shirts, they look good, they're taking a lot of money that.
They're just taking advantage.
As I said, Caterpillar, IBM, the Fortune five hundred companies are now saying, wait a minute, there is something wrong with this picture. And they are, they are making huge amounts of money. And it comes back to mail order.
If I'm not mistaken, uh, when this thing recommended to us, I'm endorsed by the, the county commissioner.
NACO's the biggest pusher.
What is NACO doing about?
Well, may I ask a couple of questions? Um, first of all, Medco is the one, on my Blue Cross Blue Shield card, it's Medco.
Right.
And so any drugs that I get goes through that company.
Right.
And, um, I was just, in this last week, having to get some medication for my daughter for some surgery she's gonna have, that I had to call Blue Cross Blue Shield, I had to call Medco. And I'm, ended up having to get through Caremark. So Caremark was the only company that had this particular medication. So, you know, in my mind, Caremark is not all about, um, but.
Did you call locally?
Yeah. Um, I had to go through my Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, um, in order to get this, because it's an infusion drug or whatever, it's, um, but anyway, um, you know, again, I looked this morning just to check, to see, you know, the pharmacies that had agreed to participate in this program in Lee County. And I still see your pharmacy on that list. And, um, I'm just wondering if you feel this way, has the Medicine Park Pharmacy not withdrawn from this program?
We have to take the contract, 'cause if we don't take that contract, then we're eliminated from all their other contracts.
Okay, so, um, so it seems like to me the beef should be with, with what you're doing with your company in relation to this contract. Because at the end of the day, I'm sitting here as a commissioner wanting to help provide, um, healthcare to our citizenry. And, um, you know, Bladen County's done it, I, I looked at Buncon County's website and, um, on their website, when you pull up their county, they've got the drug prescription card program is one of their things on their front page. And then I, you know, looked into it and it told where they were, how they were available, but Bladen County, uh, as you're well aware, is a, um, kind of a rural county. And, um, I think they said they've got about two hundred and fifty people on the program right now. And so far, in about six months' time, it has saved the citizens, this is not the whole total cost, this saved the citizens eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, which ends up with, if you divide that, it's about seventy-three dollars a person that went in and used those cards. So, you know, it's hard for me, you know, I can't fight that big thing. I mean, I wish I could, but, you know, at the same time, I'm looking at where you're participating. And, and I'm wondering why we have to, you know, um, keep our citizens from taking advantage of something that's gonna save them money and possibly improve their healthcare because of this corporate thing and this person, these PBMs have figured out how to make money. And, uh, you know, that needs to be fixed. So I, I don't, I just don't think Lee County is gonna fix it. And I, you know, I have got probably the wrong philosophy, I love your pharmacy, I know how generous you all are. At the same time, I'm sitting here seeing something that I think can, um, benefit the citizens, that, um, you know, I just, I still think we need to take a look at it.
As I said, in the beginning, when, just like you said, we cannot drop, we, if we could, we would. Been in, doing it thirty years, these things, and they have never, ever walked in our store and said, let's negotiate a contract. They don't negotiate contracts.
I guess I'll go back and make my point one more time.
My statement is, at some point in time, people have got to stand up and saying, this is wrong.
Okay.
You're being used.
All right, with my prescription card, right now that I have, with, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, does not money go to Medco? Yes, Medco is my, my prescription program.
Right.
There is no difference in my mind, I say, you gotta explain to me how it's different. There, there's a Caremark card, uh, or a card that we would put out where Caremark was the PBM. I mean, what is the difference between my Blue Cross Blue Shield card and Medco?
Two different companies.
And two different companies, and that's it.
Two different companies.
And that's it, right?
Two that have you just mentioned, Medco and Caremark. And when you throw in Per Express, those three contain eighty percent of the market. They dictate what's going on with it.
But I love my prescription card. I love going in and, um, getting a discount on my drugs and, you know, I just, I cannot see how I could sit here and deny, you know, people who don't have access to.
We have Helping Hand.
Okay, can you, not to truncate what Amy's saying, 'cause I wanted to.
Do you, do I make any point?
Yeah.
Let Amy finish.
I, I did finish, I did.
I was gonna add to that, because, you know, you, you're talking about the Helping Hands, is what she said. Can you explain that a little bit? And, because what I hear is, her points are very valid, I believe. And at the same time, what I'm hearing from you is, you're being dictated with respect to how much you can charge. You can't stay in business charging a dollar fifty for a prescription, you can't pay staff, you can't, you, you'll have no income and you'll shut down and then you'll have just chains in town.
And what gets mine is when I say what they're making.
Okay. Now, I think Amy's concern is for the citizens of the county to be able to have, at, you know, in what little capacity the commissioners can affect healthcare costs, that's what she's saying. I also believe Mike Haynes has the exact same goal. Now, how does this have anything to do with Helping Hand and over time, I mean, how does one affect the other? 'Cause you keep saying Helping Hand and.
Helping Hand clinic is.
That is something that's open at just a certain amount of hours and people have to get there then or they're not, you know, and they don't know that they're gonna get the drug the next time. and they don't know that they're gonna get the drug the next time they go. This is a consistent program.
Well, at Helping Hands, just like the PBMs, they have a formulary down there. And they, you know, use certain drugs, just keeping the cost down. But if you support this program, and believe me, I look at these people every day. And as I say, it's gotta come at a point in time, and people gotta stand up and say, you know? And hopefully, it can start here in Lee County. The PBMs run this whole healthcare. And when Caterpillar, as I said, three of the biggies, saying enough is enough, you know what? I would hope we're not part of that same situation, saying, we're gonna endorse it. Because all you are, are endorsing the PBM to continue on as they are, saying, this is fine. Somebody needs to stand up and say, this is what the PBMs are.
Mr. Chairman, at the risk of, because we could go on all day probably on this debate, I would like to see Ms. Stevens and Mr. Haynes investigate this further about what the actual implications over time, if, if she doesn't oppose, because I think you have some very good points.
Well, another quick, you know, that $18,000, I don't know how many prescriptions are. Average prescription runs $65 a prescription. I don't know what that 65 going into that $18-
Yeah, it was $71,000 was the retail cost, and it saved the citizens $18,000.
But I'm looking at it the other way around. When you take my $65, you know, $65-
So, the average retail was 42.
You know, at $6.30 script, what those guys are making, they come out like bandits. Now, why do you wanna help them? The rich gets richer, the poor stay poor. I mean, that's, that's what happens.
See, I don't think at Helping Hands, it is, and, and I've got some personal family involvement in, in Helping Hands. But from the drug issue, uh, prescription drug issue, I don't think that they are a substitute for this or, or other programs. Because of the limited time that they're open, uh, and, and I really don't know what Helping Hands does as far as prescription drugs are concerned.
I have worked at Helping Hands Clinic.
Yeah.
And there's a physician down there.
Right.
And, um, they have a formulary. Somebody comes in with a cough and a cold, and they're running a temperature. They have a certain drugs that are used for the cough, the cold, and give them antibiotics.
But a, a, a normal person that doesn't have a cough or a cold and comes down there and needs-
They do high blood pressure medicine and diabetes medication.
Exactly.
And, but it's limited to that, is that correct?
Oh, I don't know. I'm, no. I'm just saying, that's what, that's the two main things I think.
I, I mean, a, a person that comes in from the doctor's office and has a prescription, he cannot be assured that he can go down to Helping Hands and get that-
That's true.
Fill it at a lower cost.
But they'll switch it to something within their formulary to pay for it. And that's exactly what, you know, it comes back to prior authorizations with the PBM. You have a prescription for, uh, Provacid, and Caremark doesn't like Provacid. They say, oh, we're gonna switch this over to Nexium. The reason why they switch it up is because it's to their financial benefit.
Yeah.
And same thing with the Helping Hand. Doctor's written it for this, well, we got to use this because we only have so many dollars to work with.
Mr. Chairman, I go on with, uh, Mr. Adams. Um, if Ms. Stevens was willing to do it, uh, to get together and do this little verbage as far as the impact it may have on our people. And, and I also would like to see a recommendation come back from the Board of Health on this issue.
Well, they already have made a recommendation. They made a unanimous recommendation to drop it.
Where's a copy of it?
That was in-
It's on the front sheet?
That was in-
For the Board of Health.
That's not a letter signed by the chairman?
No.
Oh, that's not a recommendation?
Well, we voted, and I, and I think it was in, I think it was in July, but we voted, uh, they, they made a motion, they voted, and those minutes have been signed. So, they did, you know, they did make a formal recommendation.
Should you vote?
I mean, I'm, I'm attempting to be objective here.
Were you there?
Amy was being objective.
Now, I was there in a previous meeting where Charles and I had a very similar discussion. So-
And believe me-
You know, it's just two different seats and we're sitting in. You're, you're sitting in a pharmacy seat, I'm sitting in public pharmacy.
Just like y'all said there, it's the financial part. Gentlemen, ladies, it all comes back to dead presidents. And we cannot continue filling prescriptions on what they're doing. I saw a segment on TV this morning talking about people going to emergency rooms, waiting for four hours. In my last page, and, uh, the physician that's on Dr. Estes', she has said many a time, in our healthcare costs, gentlemen, I'm telling you, this is where we're headed. I'm, I'm telling you.
Well, I mean-
And when the Fortune 500 companies are having to pay up to money-
I'm sympathetic, because I've been following Medco, 'cause I have lots of time where I investigate these kind of things on a regular basis. And, and certainly, the sheer volume of lawsuits and pending litigation and, and between these companies and people who are as tired of them as you are, and who have a lot more money to fight them. So, I, I've been concerned about this for some time. But at the same time, I think Amy has some legitimate concerns. And I don't want to just abandon it based on this conversation here. And what I'd like to do is, is have this pursued a little bit further, because Mike, your board made a decision based on two meetings. And, you know, we need more information, because no matter what you get, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. And no matter who you deal with, you're gonna be dealing with one of these three guys in 80% of the situations out there.
Yeah, I think, I think it, I mean, it, it is-
But we don't need to be putting our businesses out of business locally.
It is, it is obvious. It's a, it is a two-edged sword. Are there individuals who, in the short term, folks without insurance, who could individually benefit? Yes. But we also know that it's feeding a much larger system that really comes back to keep drug prices very high at incredible, I don't think just good business, but incredible profits to these, to these middle, middlemen, the PBMs, that are, that are taking these huge rebates from the matter of fact.
But are the implications long-term? Long-term implications are certainly fiscally, fiscally for you to stay in business. If, if, if 200 of your clients started using the service and all of a sudden started getting everything online and away from you, that's going to affect you. Not in the meantime, you're also getting, you cannot charge but $1.50 for your time, effort, and energy to fill prescriptions. Long-term, could this affect the Helping Hands? If enough people, you know, get into this, and fewer pharmacists are dealing, and if you don't stay in business, then is the Helping Hands program jeopardizing, they're forced to use this program?
But even on this card-
Which means their costs actually go up over time, rather than down.
Unlike your card where you have a copay. On this card, as I just say, I just use Nexium as a prescription, as an example. The person goes down, they got stomach problems, they go down there, and the doctor says, oh, acid reflux, we're gonna write this prescription for Nexium. Go down to the pharmacy, lo and behold, I don't know whether it's on their formulary or not. They say, oh, we send it through. Number one, I pay for the phone call to send to the PBM, okay? Send the phone call. The PBM says, no, it's not on our formulary. At that point in time, what is on the formulary? Then I got to call the doctor back. Wait for the doctor to call back, okay? Send it back down to the pharmacy, might be two hours later, it might be three days later because of the formulary. We get the okay from the doctor to change it. Still, that drug, we're gonna be selling it net cost. We sell it at net cost already. So, what happens?
I understand your issues. I just think that your, your argument, it's not an argument, it's not really with us. And it should be with the, um, with the company, and your participation with the company.
But if he doesn't participate, he loses 60% of his customer base.
Exactly.
So, what is the pharmacies, Pharmacy Association of North Carolina or National Pharmacists Association? What are they doing? This is a legislative issue.
We're adamantly against discount cards, because it, all it is, if you're in the business of knowing what's going on, we see it as a way for the PBMs to generate money for their own selves, and then have that list to be able to send their information to promote their mail order.
But there's obviously legislation somewhere on the national level that allows this to occur.
I hate to say this, but I'll just lay it out there. The boys and girls in Washington DC, they're all for the big boys. They've got lots of money, and that's what it comes down to.
So, until that changes, what is Little Lee County's input gonna matter?
You know, Ms. Smith, it's at a point in time where somebody needs to stand up and say, you know, we've looked at this plan-
It's the incentive.
And say, you know-
So, if all the pharmacists of North Carolina decided they were no longer gonna participate, that would be a pretty big message.
Yeah, if they were all together. But if the one guy who doesn't hold out, he gets a, gets 100% increase in his business for all of them out.
You know, this card is so insignificant here in Lee County, but it's just, it's, it's a deal that somebody has to take the lead with it. And I'm going around locally and hopefully take my message further on out, educating people about PBMs. And this is what I'm asking this board. Take a look at your own card for county employees. I guarantee you, we're getting stuff. I guarantee you, they're getting the rebates. I guarantee you, the word fiduciary is not in your contracts, because they're not looking out for us. I urge you to look at that contract. And when there's verbiage in there-
Can David and Mike look at it?
You're looking at?
Well, David, uh, you, you could look at that whatever time back.
Well, if we do this, I think we should also look at our purchases with Walmart.
I know.
And our, every other theoretical and philosophical thing that we do that is against what we do.
Well, it's different, when you go do business with Walmart, David, they don't take the county's information and sell it to another entity.
Exactly.
That's a, you can't make that analogy even stick remotely.
But what I'm hearing, the argument is, the middleman is killing the little man, and that is the Walmart argument. So, it's the same difference. It's not about selling information, it's about the little man being able to make money. And I'll tell you right now, the county buys stuff from Walmart.
But Walmart-
They see the purchasing. So, that means there are local businesses in Lee County not getting our money.
But when you go buy it from him, he doesn't, he doesn't sell your information to Walmart, who then turns around and markets to you to take him away. That, that's the difference. What, what he's saying, and I'm not, again, I'm not really objective here, but I see his point, which is, when, if you go take your card to him, that information goes to the Caremark, or, yeah, Caremark. And Caremark then has your information and can bypass him to get your business directly through Caremark. That's what they're, they're using him against himself, because eventually, they wanna scoop up all the customers for themselves. It's not about competition. It's about just taking it away and using him to get the information. That, that, that's a very different thing than Walmart being able to undercut costs.
Your contract with Walmart's part perfectly is fine. What I'm saying is the county prescription drug card that your employees have out there, that they go and get their prescriptions, part of their benefits for working for the county. As I say, if you look at that contract, I guarantee you, the PBM retains the, uh, the rebates all the way through. And fiduciary is not in your contract, because they're not wanting to be held responsible for. And if they're not a fiduciary agent for you, you know what? We don't need to be doing business with them.
Well, why can't, Mr. Chairman, can't we let the county manager and health director work on this?
And I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna, uh, Commissioner Stevens in on this too, with, uh, with Mike. And coming back with a recommendation. And I'll, I'll let, end this, and when would be a good date? The first or second meeting in October?
The second meeting in October. I mean, the 16th, we could do it. That's a month. In the meantime, we can talk to our local pharmacists about these things, see what they think.
That's, you know, as I say, even on your county plan, we would love to be involved in it.
Again, my interest is-
I'd love to see a local plan.
The disadvantaged citizens of Lee County.
I think Mike feels the same way.
And, and they're, and they're getting that. And, and maybe, maybe there's some program that we could, in Lee County, initiate to, uh, to help those qualified disadvantaged citizens receive, receive some discounts.
That would be better.
That would, that would be better.
Maybe if we create our own card and get the rebates, we might help Helping Hands.
They go to his pharmacy, and they go to his pharmacy.
Whoever.
And they offer, right. But we not go through Caremark.
And, and, but maybe we could start a program like that, uh, Commissioner. Uh, just, just a county program that, uh, making sure the people, it's not abused by citizens that don't need it. But, uh-
20% of the reasons to help Helping Hands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the board of that emergency food, food pantry. We used to give until we, uh, our, our cash balance got, you know, below on a, a certain level. We used, we used to help families out on, uh, prescription drugs, as you well know, Charles. And, uh, but we've had a, we've had, we've had to stop that. So, there are, there is a sizable number of citizens in Lee County that could, that could use this discount. And I hate to see them cut out, because, you know, some guy's making 200, $200 million.
And we may, I would say-
Okay, let's, can we, can we cut this off until the meeting of, of, uh, October 16th to come back with firm recommendations?
I appreciate y'all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, President Smith, application for the 2007 Urgent Repair Program, Karen Kennedy.
Good morning again.
Nice to see you again.
And on a lighter note, as Commissioner Brown said, here's an opportunity that is available to the county through the Norcalina Housing Finance Agency. It's a program called the Urgent Repair Program, where entities such as Lee County and other government agencies could get up to $75,000 to just do urgent repairs at qualified people's homes. An urgent repair, you could spend up to $5,000 on doing something as a roof leak, roof repairs, plumbing issue, electrical issue, or something of that nature. It would only be $5,000. It's a grant, it's not a payback, and the income is the piece to the puzzle. Because as the memo said on page 123, the city has received one of these, and we're just getting started. We had that huge list of applicants. We also ran an ad in the paper, and we received good publications from that. But getting to the 30% below has been the issue for us, because with this application, you have to adhere to 70% of the people you help must be 30% below income in the county. And that has been the piece of the puzzle for the city that is not working. Because when you get to that house, it's really dilapidated, and you're trying to pick the item that you could spend $5,000 or that type of income level, maybe renting or an assisted housing.
These are legal residents of North Carolina or Lee County. They're legal. Y'all check that out.
Yes, we have, we usually do a preliminary title check with attorney.
And they have to be homeowners?
Yes.
And, um, their net worth doesn't matter, just present income?
Just present income. Um, I'll be honest with you, I've never worked at the program. I have heard other people across the state that have had success with it. The city just got theirs going, and we haven't started a house yet. We're in the applicant process. I think it's a good program.
Have you ever heard of any failures with the program?
I have not yet, no. Um, I've heard more people leaning to this, 'cause it's quick.
Yeah.
You go in and do it, and-
There's a cap for $5,000, which is real simple.
And, and you know, going in, that's all you're getting.
So, it could be one, one thing, or two or three things, as long as it didn't go $5,000.
Right. And the other catch for this project and all the future rehabilitation projects is the new interpretation of licensing by the contractors. And we are having a harder time trying to find licensed contractors locally that want to work on this program. And then, in the past, what you have gotten is unlicensed generals overseeing licensed subs. And that is a hot ticket discussion at all of my state meetings. We have got to figure out a way to make sure that we are following the Department of Insurance guidelines with licensing. So, with this project, we may go out and just apply for trades. We may, if we know there's 10 houses, we're gonna do plumbing at 10 houses. We're gonna put a bid out for plumbing at 10 houses and get the licensed person, because-
Okay, now, if there is a, you're recommending we approve your application. I would remind the board that there is up to, up, on a $75,000 grant, there is a local match of $2,000 or $3,000.
Yes, sir, it's up to you.
Could I ask two questions, Mr. Haynes?
No, we're gonna take two. It's up to us.
Go ahead, Dave.
One, does the Sanford Housing Authority have their own maintenance staff? And would it be possible to contract with them for any of these type jobs?
That's a good question I'll ask.
And the second one is, can you deny eligible applicants? If you have someone that's under the income threshold, and they have a half a million dollars in stock in the bank, can you deny that applicant?
If we can prove it, and I don't mean prove it like they gotta show us, but I, I know where you're going with this. It's gonna be tough to do.
Go, go talk to your child support department about how they can prove and disprove what people have.
You know, we've had so much problem with contractors. The housing authority may be a resource. You know, I'm sure they have a maintenance department. They probably have some licensed tradesmen.
Okay. To answer, to try and answer your question, because I know you're thinking of the past history we've had. For me, and for the next consultants hired by the city and or the county for any project, I have said follow your gut when you walk in the house and when you see- I have said follow your gut when you walk in the house, and when you see anything about them. Follow your gut, and let's think about this before we say yes to anyone. And that may have helped us in the past too, if the first person who walked in that door had paid attention. So, I'll check on the, if that's a collaboration we can have with the maintenance staff.
You want us to, with that in mind, you want us to defer this until our October meeting?
Um, I, I just think that would be a piece to the application. We could say that we would utilize housing authority staff as part of the trades. I don't think it would affect the application one way or the other.
Okay.
Do you have a deadline for the application?
October twentieth is the date for the application.
So we can handle it the sixteenth, right?
Oh, we could, we could take care of it now.
Yeah, I was just making a recommendation for long term.
For the long term, we go ahead.
Right.
Let's, let's approve it.
Well, I make the most-
Now, I need to know the amount.
Approve the application.
Okay, motion is made to approve the application, uh, per the recommendation of the county manager. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, excuse me, Commissioner Lamond?
You say that will be something that you'll go out and look at to see if, if, you know, it can be done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. On item E, consider the meeting schedule for October and November.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hinks, I need to know the amount to put that your local match is in the application.
Two or three thousand.
Two to three thousand. I need an amount that you're willing to submit for the application.
Separate motion.
This is two out of the seventy-five thousand, right?
If you get, if you get the seventy-five, you have to put up two to three.
Well, let's say two.
I, I'd, I'd recommend the three thousand, the, the three thousand match.
That's what they will ask us for. Whatever you'd say, that's what they'll ask.
So why not go with the two?
I'm with them.
Will they go with the two?
I think so. Anywhere from two to three is the cap for seventy-five thousand.
They're going with the two.
It's a motion.
I'll make a motion that we provide a local match, two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion adopted unanimously. I didn't understand that, and I apologize. Consider the meeting dates for Oc- October and November. I make a motion that we, uh, that we schedule per the recommendations of the county manager. Which is on pages one hundred and twenty-four and one hundred and twenty-six.
Sixteen in the third.
Yeah. Uh, any discussions on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. People want to take about a ten minute break?
Yes, sir.
At a little point.
What else have we got left?
What? We do?
Under the manager's report.
Oh, we do? David's gonna talk us today. David, I gotta go to Ashville, be nice now. Long drive ahead of me.
We're gonna take eight, we'll be back here at eleven twenty-five. Ten minutes.
Sometime. Probably there's some fun. Remark the government agency, I'll blend it in.
Call the regular meeting back, back to order. Uh, we do have the next item on the agenda, or the appointments. We do have this, this appointment to the Lee County Airport Authority that the, uh, the listing that you have in there, um, uh, will be corrected to conform to the, uh, the current And we do have, and that is, that we have, uh, the county manager, the city manager, and the director of the EDC are on their ex officio voting members, and that both the city and the county would have two appointees, the city appointees being Mr. McDonald and, uh, Linwood Mann. Our only appointee would be, uh, Mr. Keller. And we do have one, one opening. But since we have, uh, not re-advertized this one, uh, opening, I would like to recommend to this board, if there's no objections, that we re-advertize, um, this opening that we have for the authority, and consider it at our next meeting.
I'd move to approve, uh, that recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and re-advertize.
Any of the other board members have any objections to, to that? Any problem with that, do you know, re-advertize? Okay, that is a motion by the, uh, Commissioner Lamond. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted unanimously. The Mid-Carolina Workforce Board, as you, as we know, has been, Jerry will try to get a recommendation as soon as possible. Do you have these appointments to the Mid-Carolina Regional Development Authority? Uh, this, this is a new one. We have no applications, do we, Mr. Hall, to your knowledge?
Hmm.
Uh, what, what, what is, what is that? Can you-
No, I don't deal with this.
Oh, does anybody have any idea?
Can you tell us what this does?
What, what is this?
Says assist with loans to small business, but beyond that, I have no idea.
Roger Sheets, isn't he the one that used to work with, um, D O P?
Yes.
Didn't he? He started the RPO thing.
Gary, oh, man.
Well, I'm, I'm on it. I got a pointy to it, but I, I've never, you know, been contacted. I haven't been to a meeting, and I haven't had a-
Don't know that they've had one.
A call to attend a meeting.
Huh.
So we have two appointments available there. What is it, one?
We have to replace Mr. Holt, and then we need to find a government sector.
Yeah, actually, it's two.
Okay, well, let's, uh-
We need to find out what the purpose of the board is for.
Beyond that, that line right there.
Yes.
Well, somebody needs to get in contact with Roger Sheets and find out-
David can do that.
David, this, David.
That's what we can find out about.
Yeah, we might be missing out on something.
This is.
Well, let's do that, David, and let's, uh, let's advertise for this also.
I was getting ready to say you could do that at the same time.
If you get that two thousand dollar match fund out of me.
That's right, we could. All right. That takes, that takes care of our appointments, and we accomplish nothing on, on that item.
We'll take care of all three of them at our next meeting.
And, and our next meeting is, is when? Let me-
October sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
October sixteenth.
Sixteenth at nine o'clock, the thirtieth at three.
Okay.
Well, that will be on the thirtieth, that we depend on, uh, plenty more needs.
Plan, boy.
I mean, unless you just won't be able to-
Right, the time, the time of that. Okay. I have a question under appointments. David, you and I talked about this on the Board of Equalization of Reviews. They have a, they have really a, a full plate, uh, the current board. David, you want to explain your conversation with, uh-
Mr. Akak.
With Albert Akak?
Yes, sir, and I, I think this will probably be discussed in detail, I think Thursday is when the Board of E and R meets. But they are going to have, you know, possibly a full month, um, sitting in session when it's time for appeals. And that is a lot to ask of, um, five to seven people to be available nonstop for thirty days. And Mr. Akak and I have discussed the possibility of asking this board to appoint some additional alternates at your, probably your October sixteenth meeting, it would come up, to alleviate some of the folks that work on that Board of E and R, so they don't have to leave their job-
What are they needing?
For a month. I think it's Thursday.
This Thursday.
I think so. I think twenty-first, is that Thursday? I'm pretty sure it's Thursday.
Do they have alternates already?
They have two alternates, and we were talking about asking for five or six or seven. We want to go ahead and appoint them, so when we start these educational workshops, that the alternates are part of it. We don't really distinguish alternate from non-alternate.
Yeah, this, this is very important.
They meet at two o'clock on Thursday.
This coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday.
So we're gonna be at these meetings.
No, no, there won't be any education at the end.
We're gonna take care of this stuff now, they're talking about that.
They will, they will meet again, probably in a couple of weeks.
We could be appointed.
Uh?
We could be.
Thursday, you can get it.
They meet at two o'clock on Thursday.
The water we need, we need to make a motion to appoint.
No, sir, just as a bit of information, you can maybe start thinking about, um, people that would be good to serve as alternates, and we'll wait for an official recommendation from the Board of E and R, because we have not gotten that yet.
Okay, but, uh, everyone think of, of a, come up with one or two names, if you can, with, uh, of possible candidates for this board. It's, it's, and it's extremely important. Monthly financial report, anything to add, other than what's in your package, David?
Well, we're relieved, uh, that the June sales tax numbers came in as strong as they did, which was the second highest month out of twelve for the last fiscal year. We made budget, um, just barely. And if you remember, we projected high growth, up five percent total growth in sales tax. And while individual art, articles didn't hit the projections, total did. So we finished ourselves whole. It was a, it was a close call, but it was good. And it came down literally to the final month of the oh-five, oh-six fiscal year. So, we were relieved to get that news last week. And if you have any questions about the financial-
Does anybody have any questions on the financial report to ask of the county manager?
Yeah, hold it, Joe.
Okay, now we go to the Environmental Stewardship, the Stewardship Committee, Mr. Chairman.
He has been so patient.
Always is.
Oh, I'll give you the short version. As you know, a number of recent and some not-so-recent events have challenged many public and private organizations to review existing operating and administrative processes in order to identify and implement ways to improve operational efficiency. Uh, with this in mind, an environmental stewardship committee has been formed to develop the long-term strategy for Lee County to meet this challenge. And the committee itself is made up of a six-member steering committee, of which Commissioner Lamond and Mr. Hoyle have agreed to be a part of. And that steering committee is responsible for leading and coordinating the work of five subcommittees, subcommittees working simultaneously, uh, and charged with specific areas of concern. Uh, the first area of concern is energy consumption. That subcommittee will focus on ways to manage energy consumption, whether through the use of energy-efficient equipment or behavioral changes. And we've talked to Progress Energy, and they estimate that behavioral changes alone can reduce, uh, energy consumption by a minimum of five percent. The second subcommittee is Transportation and Fuel Conservation, which will focus on ways for Lee County to do its part in breaking our addiction to foreign oil, including the, which would also include the purchase of fuel-efficient vehicles, and ways to reduce consumption, and look into the use of alternative fuels. And one of the things we've, um, started doing there is looking at, uh, using the landfill equipment as a pilot program for biofu, uh, biodiesel, and also the solid waste trucks. We feel that's probably one of the things you can implement in a fairly, uh, quick, quick, uh, short period of time, so that you don't have to do any major changes to the vehicles themselves. The third subcommittee will look at construction and renovation projects. Basically, they'll focus on developing minimum construction guidelines or specifications incorporating green practices and materials. Uh, the fourth committee will be purchasing practices. They focus on developing an environmentally conscious, uh, purchasing strategy, which could include the purchase of products with more recycled content, uh, non-toxic alternatives to cleaning products and pesticides that are currently being used, and other, uh, energy-efficient project, uh, products. The fifth and final subcommittee will look at waste reduction and recycling within the county operations. Basically, we do have some, as you know, some recycling going on throughout the county buildings and some waste reduction programs. And we'll evaluate those, those waste reduction recycling programs and identify additional opportunities where they exist. This could include things as simple as more double-sided copying, uh, additional products that can be reused rather than just throwaway. Uh, may even go as far as looking into replacing the paper toweling in the restrooms with hair and dryers. In essence, the committee plans to build upon what we've already accomplished, culminating in a written policy outlining Lee County's environmental priorities, and resulting in a more efficient organization and healthier workplace. And that's, in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
Joe, did, did you roll to Caterpillar on their, uh, recycling programs at, uh, what was that, about three months ago, we had that, is that you know where we're at?
Yeah, I, I remember reading about that, and I'm familiar with that, but I did not attend that.
It's quite extensive, and it's, it's really very improved also.
Yeah. That is, they're a part of that, that program, is where we're kind of, um, used as a model for this.
You've got the details on there?
Not specific from them, but I will contact them.
Please do.
How you gonna handle the pumping of the biodiesel? Is it gonna require putting in a tank?
It, it might. Uh, one of the things we're looking at now is there are some, uh, stations in Pittsboro, in Moncur area, that have biodiesel. And one of the reasons why we thought the landfill equipment would be conducive to that is because not only it's all uses diesel, but also because, um, we do have a portable tank on one of the vehicles, which you could go there to the fueling station and have that, and have, fill up that tank and bring it back to the landfill and use it for that, rather than, sir?
Where you going to get it, at wholesale price?
I don't know. We, we're still looking at it. We don't have, I don't have an answer for you on that yet.
But I was one of those long-term issues that you may, depending on how many vehicles you convert and stuff like that, that you may look at having your own supply. If it rises to the cost benefit, you know, that's one thing Joe and David would look at, is if there's a cost benefit to be derived. Not a big E eighty-five guy, but biodiesel's a little different than E eighty-five style.
Is, do there any, any, uh, places around in the surrounding counties, uh, that produce the biodiesel?
As far as I know right now, the, the Chatham County, and I know the Pittsboro, that they're looking into, into starting up a facility to produce it. I believe, I'm not positive, I believe there's somebody in Moncur that, uh, that is doing it.
You're right, it is. And, um, they're working with community colleges too, so that might be a way to take a look at it.
Joe, I'm only getting fifty-six miles a gallon on my car, so.
Something we need to look at.
Did you say anywhere who these people were that were serving on this committee?
I did now, but I can, I can, if you, I can tell you.
Yeah, I'm just curious to know.
Ah, I know I brought it here. There it is. The steering committee, uh, is myself, Mark Clark, Steve Godfrey from Parks and Recreation, Mr. Hoyle, Commissioner Lamond, and Russell Spivey. Uh, the subcommittee members, we're populating the subcommittees now, but we have a, a good core of people. Uh, the crew, Krista Edlock from Youth and Family Services, Deborah Brown from the library, Andrea Kern from Pre-Trial DSS, Kathy Edwards from Parks and Rec, Esmeralda Ernst from Health, Karen- Health, Karen Gillum from the Health Department, Janice Holmes from Senior Services, Michael Matocik, Library Director, Linda MacArthur from DSS, John Payne from Parks and Recreation, Bramley Reynolds from DSS, Kathy Richardson from Tax, Kristen Sasser, Parks and Rec, and Vicki Small from DSS. And we hope to continue to.
Yeah, it is.
And we hope to continue to bring some more people.
Does anyone have any questions to ask of Joe or any questions concerning material that was in our package?
Looked like they moved pretty rapidly within a short time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to make one comment. They have moved extremely rapidly and that's thanks to Mr. Cherry, but know that this is a long-term project. We're talking about getting in some pretty big details when you talk about construction and renovation practices, energy conservation policies. And I hope the board remembers that the ultimate goal was to adopt policies internal that we can ask our funding agencies to adopt as a string for the money we give them to make sure that the people we find, like schools and a community college and maybe even nonprofits, if you want to take it that far, are espousing the same type conservation mindset when they administer the programs they use our life. So don't forget about the long-term goal of this idea.
Okay. Well, thanks very much, David.
Thank you.
You've been sitting there dutifully all, all morning.
And I have so much to say and, uh, for anybody.
Okay, the first item is BRAC.
Yes. There have been a lot of things happening with BRAC over the past four weeks. I would like to give you an update from.
Did you enjoy your vacation in Atlanta?
I did not go.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Amy went.
Amy went. From the BRAC.
It wasn't vacation.
It was work, it was work.
Court McPherson, not vacation, particularly.
I know, you're saluting everywhere you go. But from the BRAC RTF, which is the Regional Task Force, we'd like to announce that Lee County has been moved into Tier One status.
Great, great.
As Tier One status, we will be eligible to receive funds from grants that would be given. There is one grant that they're working on from the OEA, the Office of Economic Adjustment, to do a growth management plan of the seven counties. We will be required to, to a ten percent match. The seven counties will divide that. This is a two-year plan and our estimated cost each year is eighty-three hundred dollars. We will be receiving written information on that from the executive director of the BRAC RTF. Also, as part of Tier One status, we must elect an executive, a member to the executive committee, and that will be addressed in the letter as well. So that is good news for our county. And I think from the relocation fair, we proved that we are a county to be recognized and a county to be.
How did, how did that go?
It went really, really well. Had conversations with Paul Dordle, who is, Lisa's very familiar with him, who is really heading this whole thing up. And it was really interesting to hear how all this is supposed to come about and over this series of years. He also explained that Tier One, or the Tier Two, the beginning or the preliminary, you know, status of us. And it was really because of some studies that were done, because of growth patterns that had happened to Fort Bragg before. And, you know, since the last influx of people over there, you know, we've got a four-lane highway now. And so the dynamics have changed, the infrastructure's changed, and, you know, really that is, that's old data. And he certainly understood that. And so anyway, had absolutely no problem with us being Tier One. And from what I understand, Lisa, there is a grant out there that they're looking for is one point six million.
That's the, from the Office of Economic Adjustment.
Right. So, so I guess the determination now is to figure out, you know, how each county gets what. But one of the things I found just fascinating, I will go on to and compliment our GIS department. That's Bob Briwell and Don Kabazki, and one of their staff people, it's a lady over there.
Janine Rossel.
Okay.
Is it Janine?
Yeah.
Janine.
Very talented, but.
Janette.
Janette. They had a, it was like a nine-foot square bulletin board type thing on a easel with a map. And it was very colorful. In fact, they had the city of Sanford was a blue, on top of the county was blue, and everybody thought there was a lake in the middle of the county. So that was one of the things that, you know, people just said, oh, I want to go there, look at that big lake. So they did a lot of visual things that attracted people's attention, but the whole map was color-coded and all of the other counties had just regular roadmaps that they would open up. And, you know, if you've ever seen those, you can hardly tell, well, one county starts and stops. And, you know, people were looking at that and they would leave other counties' booths to come over to see our big county map on display because it really gave them an idea and a sense of where Fayetteville was in relation to Lee County and then in relation to Raleigh and Durham and Chapel Hill and all that. So, and then they put all the little icons on there for like the Hurricanes, UNC Chapel Hill, NC State, and it was great. So the reporter, there was a reporter there from the Fayetteville Observer, and so he came over and he said, so, he said, do you mind telling me how y'all got in the number one booth? And I said, what do you mean? And he said, well, your table, you got in the number one spot. And I said, why do you think that? And he said, well, look at y'all, y'all are in the middle of the room. And, you know, I looked around because I talked to Cornelia the night before and they were concerned that we had only gotten one table because some of the counties got two and everybody else's backdrops were higher. And she was worried about how to kind of showcase our county. And she did this great maneuver and she pushed the table out about four feet. And by doing that, because we were all lined up in a square room, it made, it looked like we had the number one table. So it was a really easy fix there. And we've got some eye-catching flowers that, you know, immediately people were just drawn to that. But people asked a variety of questions. We had Bob Hutes there answering any questions about economic development. And there were certainly people that were going, knowing that they were going to be retired in the next five to ten years and wanting to know if they were going to be able to find work with what it is that they do right now. So that was, you know, Bob was instrumental in, in that. So he had long, extended conversations with people that were coming by. And Leonard and Cornelia and I, they were busy answering questions about the city, I was answering questions about the county. You know, the tax rate was one of the things. And this came up several times about revales. And evidently where they live, every year it is updated. So they are constantly, you know, paying taxes with the value of their houses. So they were excited about a four-year rebate. I thought that was interesting and.
Must have been from Oregon. That's what happened up there, where I live there.
What else did they, I certainly wanted to know about the schools. That was the biggest question. And the way I answered it was, of the eleven counties there or ten counties there, I thought we were one of the top two. So that's kind of the way I answered that question. And let's see, they wanted to know about crime and my answer to that was just say y'all know in case you get asked. My question was that we had a, you know, one city, one county, and one town, and we were all working together to reduce those numbers and every year those numbers were going down. So that was the way I answered that. And, you know, you can tell these people are going to look at this. Everybody grabbed the CD. It was not like we had to say, here, take the CD or DVD and take a look at it. They all grabbed that. And then they had a little fact sheet, and you all did a great job on all this, a little fact sheet with everything that people needed to know, just like right off the cuff. And it rained both days, the last day, you know, it kind of slowed down. Of course, we didn't know we were inside the whole time, but what that meant though was that the people that came were really serious about moving because they wouldn't have made the effort to come. And we probably, I don't know if we had two thousand people, but probably close to that in those two days. It was just a lot of people walking through. So, you know, and it was a variety of questions. And General McNeil, the four-star general, gave this kind of address to us the night, one night they had a reception for us. And, you know, he's the one that dedicated the Broadway Memorial, if you remember that day.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
And so anyway, he remembered all about Broadway and, you know, just really made us feel welcome down there. But Lee County was definitely the, so getting back to the reporter, he said, and I will tell you this, he said, I am a Fayetteville reporter. He said, I'm originally from Durham, so I have no allegiances to Cumberland County. He said, I can tell you all the conversations that I'm hearing today, you all are the favored county. And that just, you know, I don't know whether these people will want to come or not, that's okay. It's just that our reputation is already out there, that if you're going to come up there, you need to, you know, investigate Lee County and Sanford. So they love the fact that the mayor was there, which Bob Hutes kind of capitalized on that, so he got her to sign a couple of these DVDs. And, you know, and I said, you know, they're going to keep these things and when they finally move here, they're going to say, I've got one that's signed by the mayor. So that was great. We had a lot of fun. It was standing on concrete for, you know, you know, four hours extended, I mean, just with not stopping. And they did bring some chairs in the second day, but it is definitely, it was just move, 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 move. And trying to shuffle people around so other people could get in on the conversation. So a lot of little logistical maneuvering, but we had it all. And we sold our county well. So I was proud of it, but really the map.
It sounds like you had a ball.
Oh, I did. I've never talked so much in my life. But the, the map was the best thing because it was such a great visual thing and people kept coming back to it no matter whatever county they went to. So.
Sanford's underwater now, that night.
Oh, yeah. Well, this one person kept saying, but I want water. You know, they were looking at the lake. And so I said, you need to go over to Bladen County. They have water. So Bladen County, they kept getting bypassed and I just carried them over there. I said, Greg Martin was the manager over there, and I said, Greg, these people need to talk to you. So it worked out well.
Of the people that you saw, Amy, did you have many come back and ask more questions? I mean, you know, sort of following their lead or?
Actually, they really, really did. People, it wasn't just, and there were a few that came in and wanted to see what little goodies you had. But those were older people that were evidently working in the building, had just heard that we were there. Because everybody else, it was long conversations. They definitely wanted information. They are, you know, but this is one of the things, in my head, this is a huge decision. And when I would make that comment to them, you know, almost every time I made that comment, they would say, oh, this is the twenty-something I've moved. So this is something that, you know, they're used to doing, they are used to using the internet. And a lot of people made comments that, you know, my wife has already been researching and this is the areas that we're looking in. And, you know, a lot of people said, well, we understand is we need to go north. So that message is somewhere had already out there. They have heard that, because a lot of people made this little comment, that we have already increased the housing costs twenty-five percent just because we heard they were coming. And I told them that wasn't true. So just, there was just a variety of things, but very interested people coming by that day because they are the ones that are going to move. So it was.
The fair was so successful. Of course, this fair was going to be based on the, the other upcoming fairs, but it was so successful, they are actually talking about having another welcome relocation fair.
Wow.
The next two, I think that they're focusing on, it's going to be schools and housing. So we've really got to get that group prepared to do just as good a job as we did.
If I had had my real estate license, I could have sold, I meant that day.
But I would like for you to see the DVD. There's two parts to it. It's about Lee County and why Lee County.
And we are also going to be capturing this on the report. And they had this playing as a backdrop the whole time.
This?
Uh-huh. It was on a little.
There's the city of Sanford down there, it's a block.
Yeah, there's our line.
With the water.
That's a little worse.
Little water. That's a great shot there.
Sanford, Lee County is a place where traditional values are embraced, a great place to live and work. Here, people sit on the front porch and invite neighbors to chat and children play outdoors year-round until dinnertime or until night has fallen. We're far enough away from the big city that sirens are infrequent and traffic jams are nonexistent. The area is rich with history, has strong local institutions, has a record of outstanding leadership. Located strategically in the heart of the state, Lee County is a quick and convenient ride to many regional attractions and sports venues. Thirty minutes away is the home arena of the two thousand and six Stanley Cup champion Hurricanes, while forty minutes away is the home of the professional baseball team, the Durham Bulls. College basketball and football draw the sports enthusiast's attention during the fall and winter months with the Duke Blue Devils, NC State Wolf Pack, and the UNC Tar Hills squaring off on the gridiron or the hardwood. Golf, however, is king. Sanford has its own municipal golf course, the first nine holes designed by Donald Ross, where greens are first-rate and fees are affordable, even for those who play daily. Mike Strance created one of the finest and most challenging courses in the southeast at Tobacco Road. The focal point of a stunningly beautiful lakeside gated community is an eighteen-hole masterpiece course, the work of Robert Jones. A short drive away is the nation's golf mecca, Pinehurst, where the world's most celebrated professionals play and compete in the PGA. For fun with the family, Lee County is the home of San Lee Park, which boasts miles of hiking trails, on hilly terrain, camping, fishing, paddle boating, and other avenues to enjoy nature. But for those who prefer water skiing, all-day leisure rides on a pontoon, quiet fishing or swimming, the thirteen thousand nine hundred acre Jordan Lake is nearby. Entertainment is in the heart and at the heart of Sanford, where concerts, jazz, bluegrass, beach music or classical are presented weekly in Depot Park. On the grounds, there's a splashing fountain, a place for kids to play and adults to remember and smile. At the local airport, flying lessons are taught and corporate jets zip in and out. And Raleigh-Durham International Airport is forty minutes away. Four-lane highways provide quick access to Fort Bragg, to major shopping malls, sporting events, theater, and the North Carolina Symphony. Ideally situated within a short hub of metropolitan business, technical and medical centers, Lee County is also equidistant to beaches and mountains. In Sanford and Broadway, Lee County's only other incorporated village, homeowners have lots of choices in style and character. Neighborhoods range from the historic to the modern, from quaint tree-lined streets to country estates. Choose from reasonably priced homes with architectural grace to classy high-end waterfront properties in gated communities. Neighborhoods are friendly places where folks venture out for a stroll with the kids or pets in tow, or perhaps a visit to one of three public libraries. Sanford, a small city with vitality and charm, grew up around the railroads. For years, children have loved to see engines pull in dozens of colorful cars through the heart of town and waved happily at the engineers and conductors who have always waved back. Beside the depot stands an old-time engine for children to explore and ring its bell. The historic downtown with its Depot Park continues to bustle with activity. The revitalized vintage theater is home of numerous productions featuring top-quality guild actors. Creativity is the buzzword here. Sanford hosts the largest annual pottery festival in the state. The Sanford Brush and Palette Club holds an autumn show and sale featuring the works of dozens of seasoned, honored artists in every medium. High schools celebrate artistry and originality during their annual cultural arts observances. Antique lovers will delight in treasures found in our shops and stores. An array of restaurants reflect our ethnicity, offering everything from health-conscious chic to Latino, Caribbean, Chinese, Japanese, Italian, Tex-Mex, basic Southern, and finger lickin' soul. Similarly, the local community college serves up a full menu of opportunities. Central Carolina Community College is the state leader in the development of innovative curriculum majors. Skilled graduates are a fuel for the thriving local economy, which is heightened by an energized entrepreneurial spirit. New businesses are nurtured and supported by an array of services from the local college, including a small business center. The college recently joined forces with the public schools to create an innovative high school called Lee Early College, funded in part through a grant from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Students can enroll in high school and college-level courses and graduate with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. Schools and academic achievement are a priority. A new high school opened recently and a new middle school is under construction. The two public and two private high schools have quiz bowl teams that compete locally, regionally, and statewide. A public school program, which provides free preschool care primarily to low-income families, was given a five-star rating by the state's Early Childhood Development Division. was given a five-star rating by the state's Early Childhood Development Division. The schools award thousands of dollars in scholarships annually. Extracurricular activities abound, such as clubs and service organizations, and all types of sports. The local soccer league has an enrollment of three thousand-plus youngsters, and new soccer fields are currently being built by the county recreation department. Contributing to Sanford and Lee County's strong diverse economy are nationally-known companies like Cody, Caterpillar, 3M, YF Airst Laboratories, and Static Control. Jobs are available locally as well as in the Research Triangle Park, an easy forty-minute commute from Lee County. Faith, family, and country are values we embrace. Through our churches and other family-oriented institutions like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, upscale facilities for seniors, as well as counseling and shelter for victims of domestic violence, we anticipate needs and support each other. The military has been and continues to be an honored sector of our community. Our soldiers and their families are valued for their service to country, their patriotism, their sacrifice, and willingness to put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe and secure. Fallen soldiers from wars across the generations are remembered at the North Carolina Veterans' War Memorial in Broadway, as well as at local memorials at Sanford City Hall and the county courthouse. Veterans fill our community with the richness of their experiences. They teach our children, grow our economy, lead our civic and religious organizations, and serve as consultants to make a better place. Active-duty and retired military have chosen Sanford and Lee County as their home. It's been a good fit. Visit our websites, but come in person and discover the America we love.
And this was going the whole time that they-
Hi, I'm Todd Showalter. I've been asked to explain, uh, why I chose Sanford, North Carolina as our home and, uh, the location where I decided to retire at after my military service. I'd like to introduce you to my family, Robin, Kevin, Mitchell, and Connor.
I retired from the military in 2003 and, um, came to Fort Bragg in 1981. I was there for about ten years, and then went into ROTC, went to Campbell University, and from there, once I became commissioned, they, the army sent me to Georgia. Um, while in Georgia, we knew that I was going to be coming back to Fort Bragg, I wanted to continue my career in special forces. And we came back in ninety-five, and we decided that, uh, we wanted to move into Fayetteville. We came here for a while. We wanted something small and more like what I grew up in, the town that I grew up in, which was Whiteboard, Virginia. And Sanford really met that criteria, it's a, um, a town with a lot of home values and traditional family values. And the school system also had an important role to play in that, at that time, we had two kids with no wrong way. And it was very important that we have our children in a, a really good school system. Unlike being a teacher, uh, you know, thought Lee County had a very good school system, which they do. And you can talk a little bit about some of that.
I've been a teacher here in Lee County for going on ten years. I'm an eighth-grade math teacher. Um, I teach at Wesley Middle School, which from this location is within walking distance. It has an elementary school right next door, so that was important to me, being a teacher, to be in this school and be able to have my children close by. Um, as they were going through the school system, they were in elementary school right next door to me, so when they had plays and events and things, I could very easily get to them, um, during the school day. I, um, enjoy teaching, and the school system here is, I think, one of the best in the state. It is a very small school system, so that all the kids are, um, well-known, it's not, we don't have any huge schools. We now have three high school possibilities. Um, uh, Lee Early College is one of them, which is an innovative program where students can start as freshmen and go five years and receive a high school diploma as well as two years of college credit, which I think is something really up-and-coming for such a small area to have.
One of the great things about the school system was they're continuing, they continuously perform in the top echelon, school of distinction, school of excellence, which, which is outstanding in a community like this. Um, it was very important while I was deployed, while I was on active duty, that, that my family have a good support group, and Sanford has an excellent support group through the, the churches in the community, um, there was, I, I had no problem being away from my family, nor that my wife and my kids were taken care of in the event, that they needed anything, if you had emergency, to just, you know, some support during the day sometimes. Um, some of the other great things about this community is the, uh, the sports activities. That was very important for my, my boys. Uh, they play sports year-round, and they have a great athletic little league program. There's, you're in close proximity to Chapel Hill and, uh, NC State and a lot of the big colleges, as well as Charlotte. You've got the Carolina Panthers less than two hours away. Durham Bulls, you can get to that park in thirty to forty minutes. Um, so there's, there's a lot of good sports activities, and baseball is one of the biggest things around here. Lee County just has three top-of-the-line baseball players. Um, other things that I think are very important that this community offers is, um, if you're into outdoor activities, you've got the coast, which is about two, two hours away, the mountain, maybe three hours away. Uh, there's big lakes nearby, Lake Gordon, Harris Lake, water skins available in those, those areas, and they have San Lee Park, which, uh, has miles and miles of hiking, and a lot of, uh, activities for, for kids.
I grew up in Fayetteville and around Fort Bragg. My father was in the military, so I grew up in the military brat, and now I'm married to the military, but, um-
Still a brat.
Yeah, still a brat. But Fayetteville was a great place when I grew up. Um, I rode my bike everywhere, um, to the Cool Springs in the summertime. But it has grown tremendously in the, even in just the last ten years. And I didn't want to be in a place where my children wouldn't be safe riding their bike everywhere. That's why I'm here in Sanford now, because they do ride their bike to neighbors' houses, they do, um, walk to the schools, um, even on the weekends, they walk to the school play. And, um, it's just a smaller community and a safer community.
Fort Bragg is, is this, well, Fayetteville area's just really exploded since we, well, even before we came back, um, I guess in the early nineties, and the traffic was so congested, it's difficult to get from one place to the other. And I recall when I grew up, and when you go to Sanford, it's just a community much like that. You don't have to worry about traffic, you get up here and there, get what you need, get back, and get on the, with the next thing you were doing. And, uh, that is, the people here are just so friendly, and just really take care of them. The community, yeah, will watch after our neighbors' kids, they'll watch after ours, you don't have to worry about it. And, um, a lot, I do look out in Fayetteville.
And even now, uh, going into Fort Bragg, even when I was retired, going to the PAX and the home there, the hospital, things like that, I can still get to Fort Bragg quicker from here than somebody who lives on the other side of Fayetteville who uses the traffic. It takes a lot longer to get through the traffic in Fayetteville to Fort Bragg than it does actually to get to Fort Bragg myself.
Hmm. That's powerful.
If you're in Fayetteville, it's time to clear a world weekend.
That DVD was made available because of staff and students at CCC.
Hard work.
They worked hard, and they had only about three and a half weeks to pull this together.
How many did they take down?
They took three thousand down.
How many?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Maybe twenty-eight hundred, something like that. And they were, I think they were going to leave some there as well. Amy, do you know if they did that?
Hmm, no, I don't know. I didn't, I think we packed everything up. Let me see.
Did you give out a lot, uh, by a few of them?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Lots of cans.
They'll have some to, I'll take back to another one.
Absolutely. And if these other fairs, relocation fairs, will use them with that as well.
It's straight down. Cornelia was like, "No, one piece, yeah." And ended up-
Trick or treat time.
Just get rid of it.
You don't get rid of it, you gotta carry it.
Where'd you get, uh, where'd you get the candy?
She went to Davenport's. Cornelia did, I think, all the, um, all the donations. But she went to Davenport's and, um, Goldkist and-
The phone book.
The phone book, that's where they gave net pass.
The schools.
Yeah, the schools.
Bags and pencils, uh, General Services donated bags, Parks and Rec donated pens, hospital-
So, she went around, yeah, the hospital.
We, we, we asked for donations.
Yeah, the little heel things, those little plastic heel holes you have in the window.
Oh, yeah.
They were like hot guys.
Sounds good. Good boy.
I'd also like to mention, uh, with the BRAC coordinating committee, we, we're going to have our work cut out. Um, there are ten work groups that the BRAC RTF will be, um, getting together to focus on certain things such as housing in our community, transportation, schools and education, business and defense contractors, workforce and employment, infrastructure and public works, medical, arts and culture, a meetings work group, and conventions and special activities work groups. The coordinating committee is asking folks, we have them identified, I don't have all the answers yet, for asking for our citizens to serve on these committees as BRAC RTF holds these work groups at Fort Bragg, so that we'll be on top of what's going on. But they, we're trying to stay up with the BRAC RTF in making sure that Lee County's voice is there.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Anyone have any questions to ask at least that concern in, uh, BRAC?
One thing you might mention, Lisa, is the hip we got from General, Brigadier General Mike Jones, it was-
Yes.
Invaluable, I think.
With the information that was given or what you all decided to highlight?
With our first BRAC coordinating committee, uh, Mr. Pascal asked Mike Jones to come and, uh, join us to give us some tips on how to pull all this together. Um, he told, uh, he rec- highly recommended the DVD, that, you know, the senior officers would, you know, like to spend time by themselves.
We were the only ones that had a DVD.
Yes.
And other people came by and pulled one so they could take it home to their counties.
Yes. They actually had, I think a lot of the counties had packets of information, just stuffed with paper.
That's right.
And we, um, Mike Jones also told us what to target, what would be of interest to the, you know, our audience. And we listened very carefully and took down everything that he said and tried to pick up on all of that. And I think we did, even with the map, you know, um, Mike told us that they, they want to see where Fort Bragg is at and what is around Fort Bragg. So, with, with us putting Sanford in the center and showing all of the activities and what's available, you know, in the proximity-
They just did it so visually perfect. Everybody said, "Well, y'all just look, y'all in the middle of everything."
And we are, that's what we want to, that's what we want to convey-
Right.
-to our audience, is that we-
It came across.
There's a lot to offer in, in this area because of our location.
Who was responsible with the map? Who was that?
GIS department.
Don.
Oh, yeah, you should see it. And, you know, they had a little canoe on the Cape Fear River.
The putter boy.
Oh, yeah. And the putter boy down at Pinehurst, and a horse. Now, this woman said, "Why is there a horse down there?" Well, so anyway, she had a horse, and I said, "Well, it depends if you're doing Western or, you know, or English riding, you know, you might want to..." So, anyway, it was interesting, but it was great visuals everywhere.
And that was all because of Mike Jones and, and his input.
Yeah.
He's a sharp guy.
He's, he was invaluable to us. Mm-hmm, great.
It sure does look like everybody put in a lot, a lot of hard work in it, Don Kabaskets and, and the department here, just everybody in, in, uh, uh, all the departments.
And they pulled together so fast.
That's what I was getting ready to say. To have this thing brought in to the confines of, of, you know, uh, getting this thing done on a minute's notice, so to speak.
Yeah. We were so proud of it.
Presentation. And like Amy said, that was the only ones that, the county was the only one that had a DVD.
Yeah. And the map, I mean, it was two great tools.
Or in a visual age.
With several-
I want to see that map. Who's got it? Who's got the map?
Well, I tell you, if I, if we could have had them, we could have sold them to those other counties. I mean, they wanted them so bad, because nobody was staying around their booth, because they all wanted to come back and look at the map.
Who's physically has the map?
Um, I would say Don. Don or either Bob, Bob Ridwell.
Is it anything compared to the one that we had before us?
He's got a smaller version, um, but this one, I'm telling you, it's nine square feet. And it is a, you know, he, he needs to bring it to the meeting, he can show it to you.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think he would take the credit, because that's Don, and he said it was really Jeanette.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, anyway, and Bob Ridwell, I mean, he is, they all plugged away.
Mm-hmm, and in a short period of time, too. It was like, "We need the map." So.
Sounds like you're a little-
Don's always told me, "It's no problem if it's on a computer, he can do it."
He can.
That's his tool.
Okay, the next item is update on the workplace initiatives.
Yes. If you'll recall, back in, um, January at the board retreat, on the flip charts, we just brainstormed on several future challenges, and then I asked, um, the commissioners-
Right, right.
-and the department heads to rank those challenges. We have narrowed them down to three. Um, this year, employees will be focusing on workforce development, our aging population, and employee health and benefits. Through workforce development, we hope to offer training that will further skill our, our employees, our older employees, plus the employees coming in. I thought Jerry had a question.
I was just going to get Mr. Hall to, uh, pass one right here. Just a minute.
Um, again, employees will be focusing on developing, um, training opportunities for our employees. This will also attract future employees just because of the availability of the programs that we offer. Um, the aging population, um, senior services is focusing highly on this one. They are wanting to implement training programs for our aging population that, um, to use their knowledge for areas even in local government to volunteer. That, there's several places where a volunteer could serve in short periods of time due to the absence of an employee, and, and they're going to focus on that. They're also wanting to focus on more health screening, support groups for our aging population, and fitness programs as well. Um, also, for the employee health clinic, Lee County desires to design and implement a health clinic for our employees that can reduce our cost with insurance, but can also, um, allow employees to receive health benefits or clinical information without having to pay a co-pay. Um, they are talking, they will be looking at this as a collaborative effort with some other agencies, uh, and as those discussions become, um, more organized, I'll update you on that.
Is the city involved in that?
That's the one that we, they want to open up discussions with, and I'm not sure how far along they are. To make it beneficial, there would have to be more employees involved. Um, benefits, uh, for our employees, um, they will be looking at Clue to assist with that, things to increase or encourage employee fitness, um, for their health as well as their families, and also, uh, offer these opportunities to in, uh, increase morale among employees.
Does anyone have any questions to ask at least concerning these initiatives?
Looks like it's three good ones.
Now you did a lot of work. A lot of work ahead of you, yeah. Lisa found a job.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, Commissioner comments, I, I do that kind of, I'll start with Mr. Pascal, uh, or Ms. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Adams?
Just one, um, our vans with youth services, has it been brought to your attention, the condition of those vans? David? I took some pictures. I'll be glad to provide them, but those vans are in horrible, I mean, I was, I was astounded, uh, because they're- But those vans are in horrible, I mean, I was, I was astounded, because a group of our employees were going to a statewide conference. The first one they were provided had expletives on the doors, written on the outside of the doors, would have been shown to everyone.
We're talking about the coach van?
No, the youth services van.
Oh, sure.
So that, after they realized they didn't want to be driving down the road with expletives written on the side of the doors, they got another van, which exteriorly, on the exterior looked fine, but on the inside, the plastic paneling was ripped off, there were, seats were all gashed and torn and knifed. Anyway, it's just something to be aware of. These are taxpayer-funded vans, and I realize some of the individuals that we take care of are troubled and have issues, but at the same time, we should be aware of the condition of our vehicles.
Yeah, I was aware, or am aware of the condition of those vehicles. One thing that was brought to my attention when I was talking about this not long ago was that these vans also double in the summer to transport lawn maintenance.
Oh, yeah, there were rakes and leaves and everything else inside the vans, too.
You know, we have such a tight pool, you know, we have two vans, basically, for the whole organization. And they get used daily by the youth services group, and then in the summer even double duty. I'm not offering excuses, but offering that we're aware of those condition problems. Those condition problems that you mentioned, specifically the explicit, explicit words, negative words have been removed, to my understanding.
Yeah, they have.
But, you know, it's an ongoing challenge to stay on topic.
One of them has made them.
Both of them do. They get run hard.
And I thought my understanding was whenever a county vehicle left, the county was supposed to have a Lee County decal on it also. The magnet, magnetized?
I don't know, I've never heard that.
I thought we had a bunch of magnetized Lee County decals.
Most of our cars are marked permanently, not just magnetized. I can't think of...
You've got an idea to ask someone.
I don't know.
Yeah, because I thought we had like a handful of those, whenever a county just threw it up on the door, just the little, just like...
Well, here's it for the parade.
Yeah.
Or did it say, does that just say Lee County?
But it's the same logo that's on the pin, except it's on a magnetized stance.
I'm not aware of any of our cars that aren't marked. If they are, they might have just got it...
Well, this one didn't have anything on it.
Added to the fleet.
I don't know.
That was a van that wasn't marked?
Yeah.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, I do have to say something about the Fire Advisory Committee. We, we're doing some really hard work. We've had three meetings with the chiefs. We have another one that's scheduled for next Wednesday, 27. We have six goals that we hope to accomplish for the fire service. And this community, we will try to put some wood to those, those goals to help us attain We've had fire chiefs, the Lee County, come and, and speak to us in pros and cons about countywide fire service district and, of course, countywide level hacks. Right now, Benny Nichols, the fire chief in Fayetteville, is acting as our facilitator when we have meetings with the, with the fire chiefs. And that has worked out really well. And he's doing this gratis, and he's very knowledgeable, and is helping out the ministry.
Just to add to what you just said, you know, I was in attendance that night. I thought it was great, the two individuals that they had, the fire chief and then the guy who works for the state, Fire Marshal Office. Is that not online somewhere that you can see it?
Is that the one that was on DVD? I think it was recorded, yeah. It's the one that was on DVD. I got a copy of it installed.
Yeah, all the commissioners need to see that, because it really kind of spells everything out, all the fears that they went through and the ways they worked through it. I thought it was great.
Well, isn't it true that we're one of the few counties that have a fire advisory board?
The only county that...
I think it's the only.
Benny Nichols said that, that he would, of course, talks to other people in other counties, and they were just amazed that the county commissioner would give the authority to a board like that to bring recommendations to, never been done before.
It would be terrible.
So I don't know how successful we'll be.
Actually, I thought it was in the statute, so I'm surprised. I said, I thought it was in the statute, sir. I'm surprised to hear that.
Get along, prevent us from having that.
No, no, sir, I'll just say this, that the advisory board has done an outstanding job. I'm not belittling anything. They have done, they have done a lot of work, and all the, the fire chiefs, the fire department have done great jobs on this. Also, to Lisa, and like I said a while ago, I want to reiterate the fact that a lot of hard work has been put into that thing for the BRAC down there in, in Georgia. And I think it's going to be very positive.
We'll be able to use it in several applications.
Well, I was getting ready to say, yeah.
The chamber can use it, and it's really, the economic development office can use it.
It's not going to be just a one-purpose thing.
That's right.
It's going to be useful or could be useful. Who was doing the narration on that?
That was Billy.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. David, during, during the media day, we, you suggested we're going down the path of cops for that 30 million. Is that, is that correct, or does this board have to make a decision?
Well, on the 16th, I believe the 16th, and it's in the page 118C on that schedule, outlines that there has to be some official resolutions to officially be going out for cops. So you haven't done anything to officially issue cops yet. All you've done is by resolution to a statement of intent.
So that will have to be done on the 16th?
I think it's on the 16th. There'll be two major actions. One is that first resolution for 16th. But it's all outlined very specifically on 118C. That is the official schedule that we're operating under right now. It's very important that we issue those bonds before the end of this calendar year so that we don't hamstring our indebtedness capability in 2007. So that's why we are trying to get this done.
And it's a concern of mine, too.
We're, we're in good shape, as long as we...
Bypassing the bond.
Yeah, if we run into 2007 and issue debt in January or February, we won't be able to issue debt again for more than 12 months.
We have, what you're saying, we have, we have to issue these bonds or sell these bonds before the end of 2006.
To have, correct, to have maximum flexibility in 2007.
By letting the calendar click, you're not allowing yourself that freedom.
So we, we really have a short time.
What do you mean?
Because you have to have X number of days to advertise for a bond and put it on a ballot. I mean, what you're doing is essentially precluding the opportunity to have citizens vote on any of this issue of the debt by just allowing time to pass and putting such a tight timeline on it by January of 2007. What you're doing is you're boxing yourself in so that the only way you can pay for this is through cops, and the citizens don't have a right to vote on it.
Well, I wouldn't think that was intentional. We just, it never, well, then, it should have been pursued back in April. Because any one of the commissioners could have said...
I brought it up every step of the way as we proceeded down this path. It was irrelevant, it was irrelevant to the board.
Well, in, in order to keep, keep pace with our CIP, we've got to do it in 2006. Or we'll be a year behind, right, on the CIP.
More importantly for the school.
It would change your CIP implementation schedule by a considerable amount. I don't know if it'd be a year, but it would be considerable.
There's no other election scheduled that'll be in this county in 2007. So if you want the general obligation bonds, they have to be a special election.
This has been done before.
David, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. R, do you have anything else? Entertaining motion that this meeting be adjourned? A motion has been made to adjourn this meeting. All voters say aye.
Thanks for having me, David.
Yes, sir. I thought you took that woman to break the day.